Yoba, sheehenson. I mean, I turned to her for advisement, recommendations, suggestions. Ilatila chitao, adol nih. And she'll guide me as Chair of RDC. And I, I hope that she would change her mind for another year and retire in one year. But I know she's made up her mind and I just want to say God bless you, Ms. Shamie Begay, your family. I say, etah akhaliado, etad akhachya. So that's what I would like to express this morning. So with that, akhehela, thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. You are Chairman Ez of Behensi, ah, etan sudeikis, n'jono. Behensin, na kashii behensi, or if we have the committee, because we also certainly feel that way. Ah, etan, ban sudeikis, na han dal, nishigi, ye go, edan el, dena go. Et e go, koho, ne, ne, na si kahaki, eh, shee, benadahui dil, alto, shee, khae shee. Akutah, na han na do, nishida, bakhaa necha, shee, atah, etah, ah, khaa necha. Nishilnaan, nishudel, i do, nishishteh, begi, akut e go, ado, shutsi do, eh, chohda, eh, ban si kis, eh go. But, eh, si, yilni, kot eh, eh, ban seski, shido, ah, behensi, ghi, te go. Apo, chahe, khae shee, eh, announce, banahito, any other announcements, committee members? If not, we can proceed on to the next items. Eh, de na shee, chairband, do, eh, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Of course, starting with our committee members, let's have some brief introductions, Chairman Ez, introductions.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, honorable members of the Resource Development Committee, staff as well. Ya'te, bana, analt swartaisnalt, agi, lho, aran, riknez, in shee, yaha, wallan, ninsla, oh, zeit, khatiin, bashis, sheen, suna, bitlindash, chay, do, kia, ani, dashin, nala. Hota, edan, ninsla, hashtan, good chapters, banash, nishige, eh, yaha, hogba, San Juan, and ah, nizar, Frulam, Burnham, and Newcombe. Welcome, thank you, back to you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Ez, Honorable Frulam, introductions.
Good morning, Che, ado, eh, shnata, eh, thank you, Taliaza, for that prayer this morning. Eh, She Mark Frulam, eh, dashin, eh, ado, eh, doth, nigi, totsoni, nish, nishiro, do, do, kia, ani, shuje, sanja, kene, dashi, che, ado, tena, bethne, eh, dashin, nala. Eh, kon, itosakari, sinashay, good morning from Eastern Navajo Agency, colleagues and staff, and everyone on this call. Um, I always, I always, um, want to say blessings to each and every one of you out there. Ado, um, chapters, eh, I have eight chapters out here, eh, out here at Crown Point, do, nah, hadeski, jdo, tche, ahe, Vicenti, White Rock, Lake Valley, Herfano, and Naiyaz. And I apologize, Shama, for not being able to make your dinner yesterday, and want to thank you and congratulate you, um, wholeheartedly. I had three chapter meetings yesterday, and I was really tied up with the three chapters, but blessings to you, Shama, and thank you very much for all that you do for our great Navajo Nation, for the RDC, and the Legislative Branch, Navajo Nation Council, thank you, Che.
You are Honorable Frulam, um, Honorable Ki Alan Begay, introductions.
Eh, good morning, Chairman, ado, eh, Pro temp Chair, ado, kudo, committee members, kudo, stedje, hanagani, ninsla, kia, ani, eh, dashi, je, bethani, dashi, che, ado, dashi, ni, eh, dashin, nala. Isla, wallan, da, le, patchad, shah, ki, eh, jhhtez, ah, ado, besal, tshindeski, stchatchi, salana, ado, eh, nazlin, eh, do, eh, da, eh, lan, et, ay, kudo, shanan, ish, insan, so, akheh, adol, eh, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Begay, Honorable Herman Daniels, introduction. Uh, okay, moving on, uh, Honorable Stewart, introduction.
Oh, Jazaa, no, ya'te, eh, shanai, ke, do, shama, yaja, Shamie, aron, dam, shitai, klo, ya'te, ado, kodo, isnot, angi, hit, hon, honagi, this morning, through the RDC meeting, for today, Wednesday, September twenty second, two thousand twenty one, go, analt, ya'te, eh, koh, Shaya Wilson, C. Stewart Junior, eh, and she, eh, do, tell, to, that, na, sha, ado, akodo, he, josh, that, this morning, ado, bashmas, anan, ish, step, for, tell, to, be, eh, chi, twans, ilum, he, jeda, dabe, the bashmas, anan, start, of, forty five agencies, for, representing, eh, for the Resource Development Committee, eh, do, kotsoni, ish, and, just, khatiin, bashis, sheen, khatiin, this, to, the, big, between, dashin, nala, and, um, shidot, Shama, so, I, again, thank you, Shama, for, um, being our advisor for the past three years, and, um, educating us, guiding us, mentoring us, to be the committee that we are, um, with the way that we work with each other, the way that we speak to each other, and also with our divisions and departments, of course, and, and all the years that you have provided the service to the Navajo Nation, as law, and, skalo, akheh, Shama, and, um, wish you well, uh, konsa, Jazaa.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, Shaya Thomas Walker Junior, yinche, na, na, kuch, RDC, eh, chaho, uh, kuis, kan, nashing, but, eh, go, ado, eh, bashmas, ana, eh, benan, ish, ginsen, eh, Twenty Fourth Council, eh, loop, Tilani Lake, Bird Springs, chairman, home mine chapters, eh, 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 hoda, nan, ish, ba, shi, eh, go, akheh, son, ado, do, ne, iklin, gi, eh, ashin, ginsen, bi, petro, ni, bashis, sheen, tchotso, di, shay, da, eh, do, chadish, gi, ni, dashin, nala, eh, go, ado, keh, chitot, nan, akoh, hon, zaho, or, jish, eh, shilta, wini, nih, do, la, de, hanada, bije, lo, watsaline, uh, members of the Twenty Fourth Navajo Nation Council, colleagues, uh, introductions. I heard, uh, my brother, Daniel So, earlier, shina, yinche, dah, nisli.
Akhehla, eh, sutsile, ado, eh, sek, eh, do, sedan, eh, se, keh, na, na, kodo, agi, um, ala, itle, hegi, eh, ba, sheh, winzen, eh, ah, etah. N'jon, khae, itse, bi, do, khae, itse, na, itle, an early start, eh, um, akheh, khae, shaho, ay, gi, um, Che, Daniel So, dashin, eh, do, um, sanja, kene, slon, nan, ish, eh, zit, khatchi, ni, bashis, sheen, ado, hush, kisni, dashi, do, na, ban, eh, dashin, nala, ado, chilto, itse, bi, uh, khat, naz, mil, bl, kuz, ani, gi, eh, patchad, shah, do, shada, ah, do, eh, in, kaka, eh, baka, pru, eh, ado, et cetera, tro, kona, Casmera Lake, ado, torch, into, lwa, basically, betro, Wahehus Lake, na, di, ski, shin, blena, Pueblo, Pen Tado, ado, kodo, eh, na, nay, zin, Torion Star Lake Chapter, ado, etches, bi, tro, oh, tsino. Ado, um, Belgan, esna, swa, yeah, Counselor Chapter, oh, eh, bashmas, ana, etan, ami, ish, da, ado, keh, do, um, isad, eh, Che. Honorable Frulam, eh, ha, tiki, oban, si, kis, do, li, do, chalit, oh, tu, ala, it, den, eh, den, itle, oh, ala, ben, na, che, eh, eh, mi, washi, do, in, sa, eh. Ado, khae, ki, chyo, eh, eh, alch, yil, ke, do, li, ha, aha, bi, mi, ki. Oh, eh, akid, ntnaut, khaa, necha, hegi, khae, ki, chyo, ba, wi, mi, zin, do, li, oh, do, ah, ala, che, eh, han, she, ala, eh, ala, ha, go, eh, alke, itzid, in, da, la, la, ta, da, eh, kuj, la, khond, eh, do, eh, han, she, alke, jin, zid, ah, da, ben, na, it, blinda, khul, khae, it, eh, mi, den, eh, hoda, eh, eh, chyo, do, li, eh, gi, eh, eh. Do, keh, winzen, yo, ne, ajo, ba, kinn, la, ilk, kudil, zin, eh, ki, ado, so, ba, ya, hasan, eh, ki. Ba, ya, hasano, eh, eh, it means, respect, oh, ba, ya, hasano, eh, it's embarrassing, khae, ki, sa, eh, gi, eh, khae, chyo, ah, hon, itzin, do, li, ba, eh, ba, ya, hasan, eh, gi, ta, eh, alha, si, kis, do, li, respecting each other, eh, kodo, it, la, do, ta, eh, has, zid, do, li, shig, eh, ro, sedan, eh, khae, ki. Ado, koh, nach, mi, eh, gi, eh, kis, ntsol, eh, chyo, eh, hon, itzin, do, li, hoda, eh, mi, chah, si, do, li. Akheh.
Bashin, ha, eh, akoshin, shuna, Honorable So, um, keh, sa, behensi, eh, la, khae, she, nan, ish, khit, na, di, nih, li, behensi, eh, gi, eh, go, khit, kudil, zin, khit, ta, kide, nih, zin, do, khit, kudil, zin, go, choh, et, eh, go, khae, she, na, sounded, or, the other members of Twenty Fourth Navajo Nation Council colleagues, that are on this call, introductions, at this time. If not, then, uh, moving on, staff, uh, Ms. Begay, Mr. Tahie.
Good morning, Vice Chair, this is Rodney Tahie, I'm Kianani, and Sanja Kenna, uh, I'm Richie from Steamboat, Arizona, and I just wanted to say thank you also to, to Shamie Begay for her many years of dedication here to the Navajo Nation and OLS. Um, I will miss her, um, she has been a great mentor to me, and, and I'm still learning a lot, those are big shoes to fill, and I will definitely be, be calling and messaging her once she leaves too, so, I'm, I plan to stay in touch with her, thank you so much, back to you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie, uh, Ms. Begay, let's see, again.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the Resource Development Committee, Nadani, Dona, Sinity, ado, shuje, uh, Daniel So, ya'te, benen, in, do, li, ado, da, in, ots, sa, eh, di, aden, eh, bashbe, da, hots, na, do, um, ala, na, ni, le, go, eh, da, da, id, yik, ish, danos, shi, uh, calling, and, da, sha, and this morning, we are starting early, uh, abeni, na, ni, phan, lo, eh, eh, etah, eh, ben, ya, da, eh, meeting, dashita, akond, ba, heh, and, we have, um, quite a number of people that got up early to call in and participate in our meeting, and I see that we have about forty-three, um, people listening in, and I always say that RDC is the most followed, uh, standing committee, um, of the Navajo Nation Council. She, shisuzi, eh, do, eh, ba, heh, and, hala, eh, eh, I, si, ego, nan, ish, sagi, without committee, they, eh, do, uh, uh, they discuss issues that relates to our people, our infrastructure, our economic development, our housing initiative, ado, entity, uh, enterprise, and, de, vich, de, l, nish, oh, eh, ego, eh, eh, nan, ish, sagi, eh, do, ba, heh, and, shnat, ani, uh, kat, RDC, dan, ha, sthanadi, seda, do, eh, api, tenda, la, la, ad, eh, sthan, eh, go, uh, calling, da, yil, eh, do, aja, she, benan, ish, da, halon, de, la, do, la, la, ala, eh, na, ki, al, ke, do, na, ed, ke, do, khun, zat, nan, ish, nani, eh, na, khae, yo, li, to, ba, heh, tan, itzin, shisuzi, eh, do, eh, ba, heh, and, we never have problems with the quorum, and our, this Resource Development Committee, I'm so proud of, because throughout the last three years, the attendance record has been always a hundred percent, where each one of you, eh, go, ne, ne, ja, eh, eh, nan, ish, nani, na, de, no, eh, do, in, so, in, ke, de, shne, hala, eh, eh, den, ne, ba, eh, na, selay, um, ban, na, ti, do, um, ba, ho, ha, ak, kosh, shisuzi, eh, do, eh, ba, heh, and, ashin, eh, but, ah, sa, da, di, sa, do, sa, da, di, stand, eh, ba, heh, and, hala, eh, eh, shisuzi, eh, do, sa, nish, le, she, do, et, eh, eh, khae, de, ba, shin, be, chh, de, khae, de, eh, ba, eh, na, etah, eh, be, chh, de, shite, hala, ba, et, eh, hon, on, eh, ran, sa, do, ni, tros, ak, do, ni, ne, ne, ja, eh, ba, et, eh, hon, eh, beni, na, eh, chyo, chyo, eh, eh, khit, na, shne, shne, ado, eh, keh, n'jon, go, eh, khit, khit, shne, ba, heh, and, um, I've been a public servant for thirty years, or maybe even more, I worked with DNA Legal Services for thirteen years. As a public servant, interpreting and working with lawyers to protect the civil rights and the rights of the Navajo people, interpreting them so that they understood what, you know, laws affect, and how it works, et cetera. And when I came to the, um, Navajo Nation Tribal Government, I, I, I wanted to learn a lot, and I did, we had challenging days, challenging issues, but we overcame that with the help of everyone, do, eh, ashade, eh, shte, eh, na, ani, de, kishi, adet, ke, shna, ho, kah, ado, division staff, seda, eh, ego, eh, ba, heh, and, hala, eh, ben, na, che, nan, ish, nani, di, etah, eh, eh, ado, twin, nani, na, sta, de, state, electricity, nani, na, sta, de, state, ado, infrastructure, economic development, corn, dust, ne, she, ba, heh, and, do, she, eh, ah, we, overnight, eh, do, ni, ta, it didn't happen overnight, past years that I've been working with Navajo Nation, and please work with your enterprises, ado, ado, uh, be, khet, na, shne, shi, chyo, op, na, shne, shi, hala, ni, ch, de, eh, do, they're looking at you for guidance, they're looking to the Navajo Nation, mi, ke, ichad, ato, ka, et, eh, in, han, nan, ish, da, ta, phno, ban, establish, da, sha, akob, beni, na, eh, oh, kodo, eh, akheh, nki, di, ni, do, li, do, chyo, na, shne, shi, do, chyo, den, ne, ba, da, wi, na, ha, you have one more year to serve on Resource Development Committee, there's still a lot to be done, like I told Chairman yesterday, I would like to see the one-stop shop in place, that is going to be the link to establish even more economic development, even more transportation, even more waterline, powerline extension, instead of running into barriers and issues, get that one-stop shop in place, for, for two terms, RDC has spoke on and talked about one-stop shop, it needs to be done, and it needs to be put in place for the benefit of the Navajo people. Akud, eh, eh, nija, ha, si, do, li, do, keh, I will be here up to September thirtieth, I will sit in on the next, next week's RDC meeting, so I'll be here, ment, continuing to mentor Mr. Tahie, he's doing an excellent job. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, back to you.
Uh, Chair, let's see, eh, nij, anan, nij, eh, go, uh, on, on, chao, keh, na, na, we, ching, ha, ni, di, do, keh, sedan, itzin, no, di, eh, go, bashin, etah, benan, sudeikis, aho, la, ago, khae, ni, zah, heh, and, na, na, ado, sutsi, eh, do, Teresa Woody, introductions.
Oh, ya'te, Mr. Vice Chair, shre, eh, ya'te, ben, eh, ado, eh, RDC members, anol, nini, kido, ya'te, eh, shido, ba, heh, and, Shamie, n'jon, bl, dashil, shi, uh, shad, eh, nlon, le, de, bl, eh, li, heh, hasis, ni, do, eh, di, shid, in, n'jon, bl, de, l, nish, ado, she, beth, da, ha, di, l, sa, akond, la, she, eh, yeah, um, kha, ba, heh, shlo, de, beth, li, jine, ba, shis, sheen, kia, ani, dashi, ro, ta, na, jine, eh, dashin, nala, hoda, eh, ni, ch, eh, da, hasis, ni, do, li, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, uh, let's see, koh, keh, na, na, uh, Office of the Speaker, staff, agi, on the, that are on the call, introductions.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good morning, eh, ya'te, ben, eh, keh, uh, shida, eh, do, Delegate Walker, Vice Chair of RDC, and, um, Resources and Development Committee Members, uh, Shaya, Melinda Ervisto, Siakui, yinche, do, sanan, jine, shlo, kia, ani, bashis, sheen, da, turo, di, ni, dashi, che, do, dashi, ni, dashin, nala, uh, currently, Legislative Staff Assistant for Speaker Damon here in Winderock, Arizona, um, thank you for having us on the call this morning, keh.
Thank you, uh, at this time, I am going to give the gavel back to Chairman Ez, eh, et, eh, do, this, do, she, eh, na, han, ha, swat, la, so, the shnata, Chairman Ez, you have the gavel, sir.
Thank you very much, I see, keh, and, sa, go, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, for facilitating and starting the meeting, I had to drop off my vehicle at the shop this morning, so, akheh, and, sa, go, uh, let me go to, um, BIA, Mr. Greg Mahuja, sir, introductions. Press star six to unmute. Okay.
Good morning.
Doctor.
Go ahead. Good morning, this, this is Craig Mahuja, I apologize, I'm, I didn't know I had to use star six to unmute myself, I'm, I'm, I'm a quick learner, though, um, thank you, Chairman, uh, good morning, I, I apologize for being on a little bit late, um, we're going to be a little bit more cognizant about that in the future, on the, the calendar and the scheduling, to be respectful to the members, um, I, uh, thank you for having us on today, I also have Ms. Cheryl Curly, uh, Tribal Government Officer, and, um, uh, Mr. Curly, uh, on the phone as well, I unfortunately have to drop off to, um, have a call with a council delegate in about ten minutes, but, uh, Mr. Curly's going to stay on to, um, represent the region on my behalf, so, good morning, and, and welcome, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mahuja, Dr. Curly.
Good morning, my name is, uh, Gilbert Curly, and I'm with the BIA Navajo Region Branch of National Resources, and, and good morning, uh, Resources and Development Committee, thank you very much.
Welcome, keh, Ms. Curly.
I, ya'te, ben, eh, Chairman Ez, RDC, uh, committee members, Ms. Begay, and everyone, uh, on this call, Cheryl Curly, uh, BIA Navajo Region Tribal Operations Specialist, eh, shanan, ish, na, kido, uh, shi, che, Delegate Daniel So, the vice, no, shtrang, eh, so, akheh, bida, de, she, uh, Shamie, begay, shad, eh, eh, ego, and, trago, eh, shi, de, shi, de, shne, shi, na, koh, ba, heh, tan, itzin, eh, from BIA, so, nan, ish, isin, ban, eh, gi, congratulations, eh, de, under, de, she, in, so, this morning, keh.
Thank you very much, Ms. Curly, from Gaming Enterprise, Mr. Brian Parrish.
Uh, ya'te, ben, eh, good morning, Honorable Chair, Honorable Vice Chair, and members of the Twenty Fourth Navajo Nation Council and Resources and Development Committee, um, Ms. Shamie Begay, it's a privilege to, uh, have gotten to know you, ma'am, and, and work with you, um, she, kado, she, de, ne, es, eh, Brian Parrish, yinche, uh, bitha, ka, luche, eh, nish, le, bitha, ka, luche, eh, bashis, sheen, uh, de, ne, bit, na, eh, josh, ban, na, shne, shi, ba, akheh, nis, and, akheh, uh, Honorable Members of the Navajo Nation Council, thank you for your time, it's a privilege to be on the call today, akheh.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, Ms. Michelle Dotson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Honorable Members of the RDC, this is Michelle Dotson, I am the Executive Director of Compliance for the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise, my clans are the Bathalajine and Kiani, and I'm originally from Clagato, but, um, reside in the Winderock area, uh, it's a pleasure to be here this morning with you, thank you.
Thank you, from the Office of the Vice President, President, Vice President, Ms. Etty Anderson. Press star six. Office of the President, Vice President, Ms. Anderson, we'll move down to DCD, Dr. Yelloman.
Good morning, Chair, ya'te, ado, ya'te, ben, eh, on, chao, uh, she, Pearl Yelloman, yinche, ado, um, shleni, gi, eh, tena, beth, ne, shlen, o, kud, la, shlan, ba, shis, sheen, um, tchob, ha, da, shi, che, ado, hanagani, dashin, nala, um, good morning, uh, we're here from, calling in from Winderock, we do have other members of, from DCD on the call as well, and we look forward to today's session, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yelloman, Mr. Mike Holona. Press star six.
Uh, good morning, Chair, ya'te, ben, ado, Vice Chair Walker, zeh, ado, Zatilla, uh, Delegate Stewart, and all the honorable delegates on the, uh, call this morning, and, uh, colleagues, staff, uh, Legislative Staff, BIA, good morning, everyone, uh, She Mike Holon, and she, eh, ado, to, ado, beth, an, shlo, bashin, bashis, sheen, to, han, dashin, nala, kiani, dashi, che, do, na, nish, khae, we, den, ne, kia, ba, heh, yad, we, get, that, de, shan, nish, na, te, so, good morning, everyone, and, uh, our most heartfelt. our most heartfelt, uh, and, uh, wishes to Shammy and her future endeavors. Uh, she's probably going to work even harder, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Halona. Uh, we have one of our colleagues on the call with us also. This, uh, gentleman always wishes to be on RDC. His name is Adoso.
Uh, good morning, yat'e, bine. So, if I didn't step back from the beginning of the council, I would've been on RDC. Yeah, I'm dash'ol, kind of, but not, ah, he'd be ya. I would've been on RDC, but I was the person that came to the middle and, okay. So, anyway, uh, senan, uh, Adoso yin'che. Nak'ay, na'toi'he' tlini shne. Nan'ch, e'j'kap'ah, bashishtin. Look at the net, dashishtid, oh, sena'jinidashanala. I, nenshli'go, um, I believe I have a legislation on the, um, agenda today, so. Even here, k'ontah'lin, shn'ashananta. So, ah, de'is'no'ch'anga, ah, de'ah'no'ch'et, senan, ah, k'os'ni'zada, de's'no'ch'at, yat'e, bine.
Thank you, Honorable So. Do we have, uh, Ms. Melinda Shirley on the call?
Yat'e, bine, Chair, I'm here.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, um, thank you, Chair. Um, yat'e, bine, don't not so, shek'e nol'ini, shnat'anta, nol'ini. Um, she'e Melinda Shirley yin'che, ado, t'ach'ini dene'inshli'od, is'asal'ba'sishtin. But, ah, ni'dash'chido, t'ak'nis, ah, ni'dashanala, she' tens'ad is, ah, de'egon'ashado. Um, yat'e, do, keha'ke'igi. Um, nihilhon shlenigi bah'hen'sin, um, di'bin'ebiye, ado, keha'st'oshe. Um, shima Shammy ke'igi, nan'ishis'in span'igi bah'kehela. So, um, jernigoshin, um, hawada, nan'ishigi, e'ki di'nos'as'to, keha'tol'as. Um, a'chair ah'ontso'ol'la, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Shirley, Dr. Rudy Shabala, are you on the call?
Chair. Good morning.
Yes.
This is Brenda Holgate.
Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Good morning, sir. Chair, Vice Chair, RDC Committee, Legislative Advisor Shammy, Kathy Trills, um, Legislative Reporter and Attorney. My name is Brenda Holgate. To'he' gle'ni anch'la, sena'bil'ee bashishtin, nan'ish, e'j'k'ach'ini dashishtin, ado, dis'is'wan'ee dashanala. Dr. Shabala's attending another meeting this morning, so he just asked me to listen in this morning on behalf of him. Thank you, sir, good day.
Um, thank you, uh, Ms. Holgate. We will need Dr. Shabala on the call for the one-stop-shop report. If you would, um, let him know that RDC respectfully requests his attendance on RDC when we get to reports. Would appreciate that, Ms. Holgate, thank you.
Chair, well, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Ike Hawkinson.
Yes, hello, Resources Development Committee, this is Scott Hawkersmith, uh, with SSE, Southern Solutions Environmental. Good morning.
Morning, and thank you. Mr. Chuck Howe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Vice Chairman Walker and RDC Members. This is Chuck Howe, I'm supporting the presentation for the one-stop-shop this morning, and, uh, reside in Santo, Arizona, good morning.
Morning, thank you. Is Honorable Carl Slater on the call? None? Anybody else on the call that wishes to introduce themselves?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Steve Ya'zi from INTECH.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Ya'zi, thank you. Anybody else?
Ah, she'dashne.
Go ahead.
Ah, dash'nan, ah, she'dashne, Mark Maryboy. I'm on the agenda today, ado, keha, good morning. Um, 1985, and, uh, when I got on the council, Shammy Begay was, I don't know, nisna, janobas'ny, nish'ad. I'm happy for her, um, and on the field, I, keha, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, dash'nan, uh, Honorable Mark Maryboy, good to hear your voice. Thank you for getting on the call, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is, uh, yat'e, good morning, this is Steve Ya'zi with, uh, and Kim Flowers with Navajo Transitional Energy Company. Uh, just wanted to say good morning and let you know we do have other speakers on the line, and, uh, they're, they also are from Navajo Power, Fotosol, and Uniper. Just want to let you know about that, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ya'zi from INTECH, right? Mr. Ya'zi?
Yes, that's, yes, that is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, only INTECH be recording, nobody else, thank you. Anybody else? If not?
Good morning, Chair.
Go ahead.
This is Rowena Charamaya with Minerals Department.
Morning, Ms. Charamaya, appreciate you being on the call with us this morning. Keha. Before we move down to the agenda, shman'ata, Honorable Members of the Resources and Development Committee, nan'ata, kro, di, senan'ish il'ank, k'ad, k'der'that'na'ha. I want to say thank you to each and every one of you. You have been very respectful, and we have created a good team. Let's remain respectful and, and respect each other and continue to move forward with our staff, and, most of all, we're doing the work, not for ourselves, not for our chapters, but for the whole great Navajo Nation. D'la, swatan'ne, an'aidnash, e'ban'aidn'to'le. Have Facebook, any type of social media, be careful how you use it. Ash'hor'ban'anfoshka, senan'anta, nosh'lenigi. Le'hadit eh'egishin, k'elpahusen, do'ho'no'hyanshin. You have the wisdom to know how to use, utilize tools. Ak'wa'igi, e'be'ta'wahshia, e'janshin don'af'zithanda. Continue to march forward and pray always that a lot of this will stop. We're only hurting each other, and it causes us not move forward. S'adu do'be' nas'di k'ata, do'do'be' nas'di k'ata. Da'ikini t'hiho, biga'ha da'ikidi, no. Da'ikini baho, di' social media, be'ya'cha. At'ale nchito'atni, e'ini zin, et'anchito'atni. O'winsten, ch'ban'suskesko. Big'imbaz'adun'ela. Love one another, nch'isma. It even tells us to love your enemies. If there's people that are adversarial towards you, you got to figure out a way to love them, be respectful to them, no matter what they say or do to you. Ak'wa'igi nch'ets'ol'is'indi, ts'agi il'na, do'ap'ena, nachats'oh'ol'os'iri'gi, ba'ake'twinsten. Yat'e, kro, Honorable Chairman Daniel Sew, lato, n'ich'ah'ats'is'na. As'thuih'yan'ni, bet'oh'ye, do't'ati'hol'lo. Do't'ati'tan'ne, khayta's, e'en hin'anta, adat'ole, sam'zin'ki. E'shi ben'yahut'ao, n'hin'anas'il'an. O'ho'jo'be'ta'wahsh'yan'la, ben'yes'nan. I just want to encourage you to be very careful how you respond. So, keha, with that, let's move on down to number three on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, this is Mariana Khan, I just wanted to let you know that I am on the call.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Khan, could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, yat'e, d'nishig'e, yat'e, Resources and Development Committee Members, don'ofenigi. Do, yat'e, bash'pan, das'a'ana, don'ofenigi. I just want to say a big yat'entsa'ago, sh'deja, Shammy Begay. Thank you for your years of service to the Navajo people and to the Navajo Nation Council. It is very much appreciated, and often goes without expressing our thanks, and we want to be sure to express them today. She'e Mariana Khan, um, dosh'jinah. Um, to'he' tlini nish'la, ah, ni'bashishtin, last year, dash'ch'e, san'ji'kin'at, dashanala. Ah'keha, nhis'ok'egota'isin, uh, ado, ad'a, ad'a, yeah. Good day to you all, and, and let's have a good meeting, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Khan, keha. Naxanan'ne'shigi'ra, ten'apanan'ne'shigi'ga, t'iti'at'ah'innlon, k'ro'be'has'an'in k'ah'ad'el, oh'un'zah'hol'jir. Ba'ake'twinsten, Ms. Khan, thank you very much. Although, I want to say thank you to Ms. Yako as well, for always being respectful and being there on behalf of RDC and Speaker's Office, keha. Ash'inas'nan'as'nan, uh, number three on the agenda, reviewing and approving the agenda. Mr. Tahie, could you read the agenda, please?
Good morning, Chair Members of RDC. The agenda reads as the following. Resources and Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, Regular Meeting, Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. AAM, Proposed Agenda. Presiding, Honorable Ricky Nez, Chairperson. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr., Vice Chairperson. Location, Via Telecommunications. Number one, Call Meeting to Order, Roll Call, Invocation and Announcements. Number two, Recognizing Guests and Visiting Officials. Number three, Review and Approve the Agenda. Number four, Review and Approve Journal, September 15th, 2021. Number five, Receiving Reports. A, Report by Southern Solution Environmental relating to their decemitation activities under the Navajo Nation contract during the COVID-19 pandemic. Presenter, Ike Hawkersmith, CEO, Southern Solution Environmental. B, Update Report on the One-Stop Shop. Presenter, Dr. Rudy R. Shabala, Division Director, Division of Natural Resources, and Villa Elusie Shirley, Division Director, Environmental Protection Agency. Number six, Old Business, None. Number seven, New Business. A, Legislation Number 0174-21, An Action Relating to Health Education and Human Services, Law and Order, Budget and Finance, and Ambitute Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, Enacting the Navajo Nation, and I'm sorry if I butchered this, nish'i e'be, lina, Air is Life Act of 2021. Sponsor, Honorable Daniel E. Sosse, Co-Sponsor, Honorable Seth Damon. B, Legislation Number 0194-21, An Action Relating to Resource and Development, Budget and Finance and Ambitute Committee Approving Authorizing a Contract Between the Navajo Nation and the United States Department of the Interior Under 25 U.S.C. Section 5.301, Public Law 93638 as amended, for a three-year term for the Housing Improvement Program. Approving Authorizing the Fiscal Year Annual Funding Agreement and Scope of Work for the Period of the Contract Term. Sponsor, Honorable Wilson C. Stewart Jr. Co-Sponsor, Mark A. Freeland. Legislate, C, Legislation Number 0196-21, An Action Relating to Resource and Development Committee, Ambitute Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, Supporting the United States Senate Bill S. 1535, Title Americans' Red Rock Wilderness Act. Sponsor, Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Co-Sponsor, Honorable Seth Damon. D, Legislation Number 0197-21, An Action Relating to Resource and Development, Budget and Finance and Ambitute Committees, Approving and Authorizing a Contract Between the United, Between the Navajo Nation and the United States Department of the Interior under 25 U.S.C. Section 5.301, Public Law 93638 as amended, for a three-year term, beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending on December 31st, 2024, for the Safety Dam's Program, Approving and Authorizing Fiscal Year, Fiscal Annual, Fiscal Year Annual Funding Agreement and Scope of Work for the Period of the Contract Term. Sponsor, Honorable Adoso. E, Legislation Number 0199-21, An Action Relating to Resource and Development Committee Approving a Mission Site Permit for Newcom Baptist Church on Navajo Nation Trustlands in the vicinity of Newcom Chapter, Navajo Nation. Sponsor, Honorable Ricky Nez. F, Legislation Number 0200-21, An Action Relating to Resource and Development Committee, Ambitute Committee and Navajo Nation Council, Amending CJN-36-21, Section 6, to Extend the Deadline for Chapters to Return to the 25-Person Chapter Meaning Form Requirement. Sponsor, Honorable Carl Slater, Co-Sponsor, Honorable Seth Damon. G, Approving to Reschedule the Leadership Meeting with Division of Economic Development, Regional Business Development Office, Navajo Nation Land Department, Navajo Nation General Land Development Department, Historic Preservation, Navajo Fish and Wildlife, Navajo EPA, and the Bureau of Indian Affairs on Business Site Lease from Tuesday, September 21st, to the recommended date Thursday, October 30th. Eight, Close of Meeting Announcement and Agreement. Chair, that is the proposed agenda for today, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie, keha. Ado, hin'anas'nas'lan, he'k'ann'and'wot'ol'la, Mr. Tahie. And we're here as RDC to help you as well, and we'll move on. Honorable Members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. Nan'ata. Chairman.
Chairman.
Honorable Free, Honorable Kielen Begay Jr., motions. And Honorable Mark Freeland seconds the motion. Keha, senan'ata, hon'ala. Ado, are there any comments or questions, additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, this is Shammy.
Yes.
Um.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, I text you regarding Navajo, um, INTECH. They need to, and their report needs to be added on to the agenda today because, because of the, uh, internet issue we had over here, it was our oversight not to add their report onto the agenda today. They, they did send a memo requesting to be added on for this week's meeting. Um, I would like to respectfully ask their committee to add INTECH's report onto the agenda this morning, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Begay, for that. Um, shman'ata. We would like to have a motion and a second for Amendment One to add INTECH Report by INTECH Staff. I believe Mr. Steve Ya'zi is on the call. And within that motion, shman'ata, I would like to respectfully request that we remove under Item E, New Business, Legislation 0199-21. I sent out an email to Newcom Chapter for them to get ahold of a representative from Newcom Baptist Church, but nobody has responded, so I don't have an agent. So, whoever makes the motion for Amendment One, I would like to ask that this Legislation 0199-21 be deferred to the next meeting until I get an agent. Motion, please? Motion, Delegate Stewart? Motion, Delegate Stewart?
Add a report.
Stewart, motion.
Motion, I.
Go ahead.
To, motion to add the report from Intech, Autope, Heinzige, to remove the Legislation Zero-One, Ninety-nine, Dash Twenty-One, Shenai.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Is there a second? Nan, ta. Would like to have a second.
Chairman, I'll second that.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Or deletions? Atanya, Hakushila, Shenanta, on Amendment One, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote, sir?
I voted Green.
Thank you. Honorable Kealan Begay?
Chairman Kealan votes Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Honorable Daniels? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries for Amendment One. Back to the main motion. Any comments or questions? Atanya, Hakushila will go ahead and call for the votes. Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
I vote Green.
Honorable Kealan Begay?
Chairman Kealan votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland? Honorable Freeland?
Green, green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. We have, we have a motion before, uh, an agenda before us to follow. Ashinbe, Kehaui, Klaas, Ole, Koro, Number Four on the agenda, Reviewing and Approving Journals from September fifteenth. I believe this was sent to us by Ms. Witty. Let's establish a motion and a second. Motion?
Kealan. Chairman, I motion.
Honorable Begay motions, second by Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Any questions or comments? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kealan votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Honorable Daniel? We have a vote, Zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries for September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one journals. Number five, Receiving Reports, Shenanta. If you would like to make a motion to suspend the floor rules, we can go to new business as I see the recommendation.
Chairman Kealan.
Chairman, I vote too. Okay, motion by Honorable Kealan Begay, Jr., and second by Honorable Vice Chair Walker to suspend the floor rules and go to new business. Any comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Uh, Chairman Kealan votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Honorable Daniels? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. We'll go to new business at this time, Shenanta. Number seven on new business, the first legislation will be Zero-One, Seventy-four, Dash Twenty-One. An action, okay. Uh, Honorable Chairman Daniel So, are you still on the line with us, sir? Oh, uh, Sitala, I'm still on the line. Okay, ah, Ms. Begay, could you read this in for the record, please?
As the Chair, members of the Resource Development Committee, we have a Tracking Number Zero-One, Seven, Four, Twenty-One. And the prime sponsor of this particular legislation is um, Honorable Daniel So. And this legislation is assigned to Health, Education, Law and Order, Resource Development, Budget and Finance, Nubeket, and then Navajo Nation Council. Tracking Number Zero-One, Seven, Four, Dash Twenty-One is an act relating to Health, Education, Human Services, Law and Order, Budget and Finance, Nubeket Committee, Navajo Nation Council, Enacting the Navajo Nation, Nishipbe Ina, Air Is Life Act of Two Thousand Twenty-One. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Normally, I would allow, um, the, uh, the, uh, Navajo Nation Councils that they have final authority, re, um, read the record, uh, the full legislation into the record since this is an, a new provision that's going to be included in the uh, Title Thirteen, Health and Welfare Code. I will read what is going to be the proposed, um, new language that will be, um, enacted relating to the Nishipbe Ina, Air Is Life Act of Two Thousand Twenty-One. When you go to page four of thirteen, beginning at line eleven, Title Thirteen, Health and Welfare, Chapter Two, Commercial Tobacco Regulations and Liability. On line fourteen, Section Four, Twenty-one, has the title. On line eighteen, Section Four, Twenty-two, is the purpose. The purpose of this act is to promote Navajo fundamental, traditional views on health and well, wellness, breathing secondhand, commercial tobacco, smoke in public law. Public places and workplaces are harmful. That's the purpose of the legislation. When you go to page five of thirteen, Section Four, Twenty-three outlines the definition of the law. When you go to page eight of thirteen, Section Four, Twenty-four, the prohibition against the use of commercial tobacco products in public places and workplaces in the Navajo Nation. This provision will prohibit the use of all commercial tobacco products in enclosed indoor workplaces, public places, and within a distance of twenty-five feet of any indoor area where commercial product, tobacco product are prohibited within a Navajo Nation except as allowed in Section Four, Twenty-five. Line twelve, Section Four, Twenty-five, where commercial tobacco use and smoking are not regulated. And that, that, that's the private residence, and on, it also says that the act does not prohibit for commercial use in cultural setting and purposes within a Navajo Nation. On line twenty-three, Section Four, Twenty-six, Posting of Signs. Uh, Posted in every building and entrance. And then, Section Four, Twenty-seven, Commercial Tobacco-Free and Smoke-Free Workplaces. Says there'll be the responsibility to, of the employers to provide a commercial tobacco-free and smoke-free workplaces for all Navajo employees, according to the act. And that a written copy of the Nishipbe Ina, Air Is Life, be provided to all current newly hired employees on the first day of employment. Section Four, Twenty-eight is enforcement. The Navajo Nation Department of Health and NDPS will provide, well, uh, shall enforce the act and be responsible for issuing a citation and violation of this act. And the section on page eleven of thirteen, section on line nineteen, section four, twenty-one, relates to the, uh, speaks to the civil penalties. And then, on page twelve of thirteen, on line eleven, section four, thirty, uh, speaks to public education, and Navajo Department of Health will provide that public health information, education, awareness. Section four, thirty-one, Liberal Construction. And then, on line four, twenty, on line twenty-four, section four, thirty-two, is amendment. And so, this legislation uh, was posted on the council website on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. On August twenty-fourth, it completed the five-day comment period, and at that time, there were three comments received supporting the, uh, legislation, and one comment was received opposing the legislation. Those comments that I'm, are attached to the packet. Then again, on on August twenty-fifth, thereafter, after, uh, maybe on September first, thereabouts, um, there was forty-seven supporting chapter resolution and comments that were received. And, uh, documentation from various entities were received, and those supporting documents are attached to the packet. And there is one comment that was received with recommendation. Health, Education, and Human Services Committee considered this resolution on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, during their regular meeting. According to the vote tally, um, there was three in favor, one opposing, and two not voting, two excused. And they do, they did a due pass with no amendment. On September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, Law and Order Committee also considered this legislation with a due pass, no amendment. Thereafter, the legislation was referred to Resource Development Committee. Their vote tally shows that the Law and Order Committee voted three in favor, zero opposition, and two not voting. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this particular legislation is before you, for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Begay. Ahhehe. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Ahchee, yah, we'll give the floor to Honorable Daniel So. Uh, Chairman So, Shenai, you have twenty minutes, sir. And So, press star six.
Ahhatla, Sitala. Thank you to the members of the Resource and Development Committee, and to, um, all the folks on the line, um, and ado, that's it, um, Ms. Shammy Begay, thank you for your unwavering service to the people of the Navajo Nation. Ah, Jono Nij, Heinzie, Ahheewinzen. Ado, uh, Hatmanit, oh. Uh, Mesin, Esin, Stranigie. Huju, Nij, Nij, Nij. Yat Ehu, Iya. Na Ina, Na Ti Doyle, Ito. Ah, Xinhlo, Na Tua, Tua. Ni Ka Nan, Luwa Doyle. Lu Hut Eya. Ah, O Eha, Xinh. Consultant Da No, Nda Khele, Khele, Ni Ka Doyle, Wala, Da No. Ko, Hut A, Xinhlo. Nchel A, Tey Doyle. Ah, Hut, Ninkla. Labia, Stolye, Hagi. Okwonda, Consultant, Xixi. Nchel A, Tey Doyle. Hut A, E, Nchel Ha, Xito, Le, Xiyaz, Xawee. Ah, Do, Xinhlo. So, Kedoo, Nalu, Kebel. Yat Ehu, I, Na, Si, Ka, Na, So, Ka, Doyle, Ito. Ah, Xinhlo, Na, Hut, Anizi, Ina, Yat, Egi. It A, El, Ee, Do, It A, Ee, Na, Liya, Ko, Ba, Gixin, Lo, Ay, Si. Ah, Keewinzen. Hut Eya. Do, Ah, Do, Sitala, Ahhehe, Kegi. Tisa, I, Da, Na, Hadi, Ta, I, Kegi. Uh, Kades, Kades, Chah, Ei, Ya, Ka, To. And so, hm. Legislation Zero-One, Seven, Four, Dash Twenty-One. Hmm. Ban, Sa, Ke, So, Iya. Hmm. Kunne. The Place of Business, Do, Office, Kun. I, Kaho, E, I, Don, Big, Nost, huh? No Smoking. Ah, Do, Ol, Ka, Go, Ito. Smoke-Free. Ah, Do, Aji, Ito, Iya. Lee, Washington, Don. Be, His, Ani, Be, I, Ke, Ho, Da, Eh. Okwala, La, Ho, Xinh. Iya. He, His, Ano, Ado, Iya, Uh, Kunne. Ah, Nda, Ito. So, I, E, Ben, Na, Chi, Ito. Ah, Xinhlo, Ti, Do. Uh, Kinon, Eh, Hut, Ida. So, Che, Is, Ro, La. Ik, Kin, Be, 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 Kuz, Aneki. Okwala, Kegi, Kla, To, Be, Na, Hoot, Ito, Al, Sa, Ei, Ya. Be, Di, Ta, Hit, Chol. Ot, E, Gosh, I, Ben, Na, Ito, Kegi, Kla, To. Nan, Ta, I, Kegi, Kla, To, Bin, Deel, Nish, Ha, It, A, Da, Ni Ka, Deel, Will. Chuni, Iya, You're the Chair of the Health, Education, Human Services Committee. So, Hatno, Akwondi, Ito, Asha, Ban, Six, Ke, Si, To, To. Asha. Ah, Kla, To. Oh. Um. And Ebitis. I do about here, that could only I don't eat it. So you go. Not me, that. It or the the data. I think I can. So nothing would that would that in the so oh yeah. Nothing he get. If neither of it. I do. I do it. That's all. Not all nine, he can lay. I guess see. Just don't eat Paul Maldonado. He sent it to Camo. I see on the con that they eat that egg. Of course, com- uh, commercial tobacco, she like, I see. So who I don't. We have some books, eh? So what's it, that many get a con that kiss me now. I want to know it. If neither of it. He be his own, it all not he get. My heart, eh? It been that's it. But now it's not look at the. But now it's ago, eh, I don't. Yeah, yeah, that's it. So who I could say, but it doesn't have it. Had it, it law. Eh, diggy. No, I don't so case, only. So not I. I do. So what's it, yeah? He. Oh, now it's good all night, oh, it's the only one who'd not be gay at yet. I just think it's you. He could bang it. The journey, he get it. I get it. She took her best, but it's hard. Conde, eh, it all now, so that do it. It's so yeah. It yeah, nature. Sad, not all of it, not okay, he but I eat. So, who, I get it. She agent will yeah, yeah. Doctor Patricia Nez Henderson. I do, I get it. So I don't, she's on the line. Of course, I get. Uh, so the Presiding Chair. I would like to defer a balance of the time. We're not going to take the full twenty minutes to have my agent address the committee. So without it. Opening statement is clearly like, okay.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairman Shaw. Doctor Nez Henderson, you have the floor. Press star six to unmute.
Yeah, eh, she not any, um, that my siniggy do quite a is an old thingy. She must, she's a, she's a, she's a. She day she do, she's silly cat. An- an old, that is an old thingy. So she's a, she's a, she's a. She yeah, she's an, she's an, she's an, she's a. She ain't just gonna eat that she's a, she's a. But I, I said, oh, I'm a, oh, is it? And then she I do, I guess, and I shadow, eh, she's a. I do, she aho, uh, so it be a holy. Oh, I do, I do, she mad, oh, she's a, oh, she's a. But then, I know the question years is lean. Eh, but I don't. She, she, she mad, oh, she's a, oh, she's a. That he cry forced relocation, but now. Oh, and eh, oh, Lee, uh, so he did that, I didn't. She not, oh, she's a, I don't. Of course, but I, eh, uh, she aho, uh. I do, it's a yeah, it's true. So, of course, I'm trying to is it, and it's like, and so the question, nachai, be king, be king, it's about. Now, so she is so eh. It's easy, but I can't, eh, I'll university, holy, yeah. I do, so now, so it's been and, uh, be, be, be his own, eh, gee. It's about it, it's true, and so it's about not it's true. Eh, I quite Yale University, Masters in Public Health, Emphasis in Health Policy. Of course, but I it's true. I do, it's a, eh, uh, be kid, oh, eh, uh, uh. I love it, it's true. I love it, and it's just, it's no, I think, um, she not, it's ishla. Now, so it's gee. It's a, it's la, gee, eh, yeah, do not, um, eh, uh, publication, oh, yeah, journal. Eh, diggy, shahat, had it's la. Eh, uh, and not a, not, oh, la, hey, it ends, then it's on. Lee Navajo Nation, gee, do, do, la, la, do, la, yeah, eh, who's in the holiday, oh, which is, which is the name, and that's, oh, that's no, yeah, now it is. Eh, and eh, eh, but it's a, oh, it's a, yes, it's a, and it's ishla, of course, eh. Twenty years, the nation is, Nashka. Because I, eh, go. But the shout, a clear she is lean. Because, um, the clear day, she, clear week, she got on him since. So, so she can't get it, she, and she not, uh. Chairman, she not, and they like, oh, she not, she had, and it's like. I do. Delegate Bigay, it's not she not, and they like, it's all she had, it's like. Chairman Daniels, or Delegate Daniels, she's a, and they like. Mark Freeland, Delegate Mark Freeland, it's not she's a, and they like, it's a, eh, diggy. She's a, she's a, she's a, so it's a, and it's a, but now. Hey, that's why she, but it's a, she's a, now, so she's a, she's a. I do, she a, Delegate Walker, eh, she had, and it's like, it's a, I do, Delegate Stewart, it's a, she's a. But she's a, and they like, oh, it's a, she had, and it's like, but, uh, but I, she my heart, it's me, oh, it's a, be king, that's a, so, so, at, of course, she a year and a half is lean. But it's a, I need, eh, quite a, it's a, again, she did, she, she's a. Oh, do that, oh, that, that, and so, of course, that is odd newspapers, radio, that is, and so, holiday, uh, cut it, so. I do, and they she not, uh, she a, da, she, but it's a, she's not, holiday, uh, cut it, so.
Out of a room. There is no ventilation system in the world. None, zero. That can take out the toxins. These toxins cause cancer. These toxins cause respiratory illnesses. These toxins cause death. Ashwam, this is not a... But I'm not see, not here in Shikha, only that is. The St. Hannah's Way. She's a bit of a... Bit bit of a hoa. Ah, yes, she's a... And they be Jay Soli Bi. Be Jaye Bi, ha, this is in Kuta. This is a Kunsukogotse Naha Long Bisa. Ah, don't you did Jay, Shama Do, Shana Do, Shetse Do, Shadeja. He like it at the Dino. Two years, ain't they caught? It was on, they is a little in a lahte, Ndaalne, she Mayo Clinic. They be get it, Nash Gishandi, had it, three so had a is on the, it was it then, ah, do, but that a ho's Nda. Ain't they scar? Ah, don't they Mayo Clinic that be sick here? Ah, do you, but it's not hot, you know? And then, you get to hot, ah. Mister Nez. The mass that is in your chest is cancer. It is treatable. You get that need. Yeah, the Laol Yech No, she's a... The next day, is a little in a, you get, you have none, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't. And then, the, you get, Mr. Nez. Your heart will not take the operation or the chemotherapy. You have less than two weeks to live, you get that need. She's a, she's a, how long, she's not a car? Or just a, or they a. How cool, that's she's a, the Hindi, she's a, she's not. They flacks that, she could say, the Phoenix, they just talk. All that's a person, nah, hard to let, she's not a she. She does, she might, you get, she's a, she's a, he is, he, he, that you do, ah. One hundred miles, that's a, she's a, oh, then, eh, they don't know, she's a. She's not a she, she's a, but she, yes, she. For land, John, that's a no. Oh, she's a, John, yeah. They person, strawberry, this, you get, it was a. Who's John, yeah, John, you know, they were, they must, she, no, she, she's a, she's a, yes, she. I would have been, that's a, so. Eight days later, you get, ah, she's a, you get, and then, it's a. Ah, do we, and that is a car? And that is a car, now, you get, to hot, ah. And they downwind. And they nuclear testing, that is, Nevada, the nineteen fifty's, yeah, and ah. He done, you get, and then. So, but that a ho's Nda. And they, they, ah, that a, oh, she's a, to, to, you get, to, to, you get, that a ho's Nda, he done. But, eh, well, only, to, to, you get, that a ho's Nda. Eh, the question, to start, the, the, I can't, it's not, eh, to start, the ho's Nda, it's not, it's not, it's not. Of course, none of us, she's a, and ah. Ah. And how, she's a, yeah, to hear, Kai. Forty percent Navajo high school students, they tried smoking. Twenty percent, you divide that in half, twenty percent are current users. He secrets, at ya, she, Nama, Kai. Eh, act, he, what, that, eh, blah, oh, Nana. Oh, she's a, me, into. She's been, how, she's a, gee. Bas, this is, it's east, Bas, this is it. And they, Sonny, await, uh, await, await, that, 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 that. Is a, when you inhale secondhand smoke, the effects are immediate.
On, uh, Dr. Nez Henderson.
Yes.
Each presentation is allotted twenty minutes, and it's been twenty minutes, but I know you're still wanting to conclude your statement. So, I will request of the honorable members of RDC for additional five minutes, and ah. Could one of you request five minutes for Dr. Nez Henderson?
Chairman, I can make that request.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Dr. Nez Henderson, thank you. I apologize for interrupting, but we're allowed twenty minutes, so you have five more minutes, so go ahead, you may continue.
Oh, yeah, she's a, and ah, oh, not here, the, the, she's a, only that is, she's a, and ah, most, most, ah, gee.
Just passing the legislation because. But it. What's an I chay that be deep in. I mean, several months ago. But the Law and Order Committee, we met in our area. Of all these bootleggers, all these situations that we have. And you know, and I know that there's a policy that says that it's illegal. But that's the number one social problem that we have in our community. And I kept saying is that why can't we have some type of a behavioral health? That really targets gears towards these uh social problems that we have on the Navajo Nation. Every single day. Passa the hullo to families, sah da hullo. And then, so now the call in Coco. Were limited on manpower. Although, these areas, some of these locations are being known for certain names. The adh chullo. Coco, but still, people does it. A coco, nihic who do. Not only need liniki. Hey, tala eh, the nah. It's just a huynilzando, but I would deal nilki. The queen goes she knows, ah. He got me hit na eh do, and ha lchunin liniki. And I would say that, yes, to some extent, there are social problems. To some extent, is mental, an individual, the need of it. Baby, 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 but you're into it. Aco, this she that's a quote it ah what ensn. Not oh, liniki. A coco, Halid eh. Ensn, la, la taban, sas casele. A coco, Reshwa, tadi, daht on lahteh, me liki daht hahaw. It's easy, they back, back door juh. Then they're done, and then they come back and they'd be either be waiters or they'd be either a host or whatever. Or even in the grocery store out there. But yet, out of a ta, 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 don't need da. I think majority of the time, when we get off the reservation, that's the situation now. We don't have no control over that one, ah juh. So, that comes to my point to say that um the choice of individual adult, mature individuals. To say that I, I want to go with this, but it entails this.
Members. So committee members. Then again, eh, by a day. So be 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 a day. Legislation that then again, I'll eat a she that they need to handle it. So I'll eat a eh, he could eh, don't need to ask him. But. John, but that they need to let go. Ah, he'll advance the case to let. To the best of our ability. Go eh, cut out eh, um, he knows nail. He call quarter resource development committee members than a clinic. And that the quarter again, so on the here. Um, he Yahoo, I get that don't want to hear me. Now, then again, it doesn't matter. Eh, could our eh, once they kiss the code, the quarter again, eh, the legislation, then again. She could have a bunch of cases, okay, eh, yeah, there's. Already been, you know, uh, a legislation, I believe. Prior when I was still working with the nation with bans to to smoking in the. Travel offices, government buildings. And what did he get? Get get eh, yeah, you know, what research has been done towards our casinos? The casinos that what impacts will I have on them. Although I want to lead a legislation that show again, I was looking to hoping to see. You know, graphs and charts and numbers to say. They could, oh, yeah, and he, 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 eh, then again, he has a little. Like I get now, but who but Kaya, but Kaya eh, had the queen eh, no. Which in the hospital does Lee. I don't clean eh, like eh, yeah, I think that they're struggling, you know, with their health due to this smoking. Okay, uh, they, 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 how it's the so eh, yeah, the hash into a commercial tobacco eh, twenty. As it been larger, but you get the corner, so, so on later, but, but, but the set on the corner. This air is life on data and two since two, early two thousands. It don't eh, yeah, could he could he key. So so to get eh, yeah, Native American Church of Navajo land. The don't joke, or not, a larger, eh, I just. Now, I said, don't then, I don't know, so, um, Mr. Francis, again, so I ought to be honest. Okay, but eh, yeah, the legislations and then again, eh, yeah, they came out at that time like that and asking for support. I don't want the Native American Church of Navajo land that gee eh, yeah, I need. Mzago, you thought this, yet though, um, yon dusted. How the eh, and he has a, could it, um, tobacco, and then again, that, or then again, eh, twenty. And I know you had us see, so I was a part of those discussing those talks back then. Um, and you know, to this day, I think, um, you know, there's a carve out for them, you know, to to use that. Okay, could you get eh, and he casinos that eh, yeah, they, they already pretty much follow the restrictions. There's, 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 there's no smoking in the restaurants, there's no smoking on the, on the, uh, in the rooms, you know, uh. What else are we gonna do with this evening? Now, you know, uh, the amendment, they get eh, yeah, okay, says the auto deca, and I go, we're saying, you know, as far as our people. I don't could all get none, like eh, yeah, you know, we're saying that, you know, we want to. Give them a long life and long health, okay, the, but again, you know, traditionally, you know, with all this smoke and these fires that have started. You know, the medicine men, medicine women, you know, they, they tell us that, you know, and the fires are started with lightning, you know. Eh, but just zero, you know, it affects you later on in life. Okay, with Alban says case of whom I was driving around this summer, you know, in this smoke. Couldn't stay home and it was people filling up our, our homes as well. I go and then last the song, as I get older, how is it gonna affect me? You know, I, I don't smoke cigarettes, you know, I don't smoke cigars. Which I do use the smokes in the Native American Church and also traditional smokes as well. You know, so how's, how, 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 how much of that is gonna be affected by this plus the teachings that we have? Okay, quite yet, but none about this case, okay, um, and, and you know, it is a person's right, you know, and they do have, you know. Um, the, the, those freedoms and some of them, you know, they, 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 they probably. Just like with our alcoholism. You know, where are, are, we have policies on that as well. We have help for our employees through Division of Behavioral Health, Behavioral and Mental Health Services. You know, to, to send them to treatment. Um, what, what, um, possibilities are there as well for that? And you know, I, I want to ask those questions and see what their responses would be, you know, where, where is the research to say? This is how much is, is on Navajo and also going back to our healthcare facilities. You know, going down, thinking of the hospital down here and for defiance. In the rear of the building. I across the street, they have a little stand right there for smokers only. You talked about secondhand smoke, you know, those chemicals being on their, on their bodies and whatnot. While these doctors and nurses, they come out and they smoke out there, they go back in and they tend to our elders again, they tend to us again. After they have a smoke. You know, how is that gonna work then as well to, okay, listening to this presentation, all these thoughts are going through my mind. And you know, that's just what I want to, to share and express, shouldn't I, uh, for, for, for now, that's all I want to share.
If you have a sitzala. Honorable Stewart, could I behind you, though? Night and get did a chart store, grass, like, about then, though. Then they go behind you, because she amine hand the floor back over to. Uh, Honorable Chairman Daniel Shaw and your agent. Chairman Shaw, should not.
Oh, I can't have that. Hello. I don't, and I, members of the. Resource and Development Committee. Do it. Number one, um, the health. Um, command orders. So eh, I don't get that. Oh, the, eh, the car, eh, yeah, that's it, though. And they. Not just. No, has under. Eh, they could, eh, uh, as they're large. I don't see the, the, but sad, but then how did I, but long as long as seen eh, nasty. I see what I, eh. Oh, eh, yeah, who is. Oh, oh, I'm eager, what I've seen, that just send to like. So I don't, eh, that's all eh, I don't get that, which is. I couldn't, eh, um, rare, that many, gee, do. So what is it, yeah? I'm close, eh, that I'm too. But eh, gee. Um. Legislation, but the legislation, eh, gee, eh, to. It's saying that hello, eh, that they, yeah, oh, um, eh, I do, could you, uh. Eh, um. Masan, though, so now, eh, could it, they're in the line, eh, that do, yeah, not, oh, see. Eh, gee. I do, so, but yes, so eh, yeah, um, I can't, eh, gee. But. I'll win, and again, uh, without eh.
Um, at this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to. Um, allow my agent to proceed to. Um. Answer some of the questions, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman Shaw. Oh. Uh, Dr. Nez Henderson, you have the floor to respond.
Yeah, eh, Nana, um, Chairman. Um, um, should you add, um, delegate Stewart, you, you asked about graphs, charts and graphs. Um, just wanted to make, um, I guess, get some clarification, are you wanting charts and graphs of. The prevalence of commercial tobacco use among the Navajo people? Hey, do you like, should you add, what, what are you wanting from us?
Uh, Chairman Stewart. Oh, should I, um, I don't, uh, should, um, should say, quite, um, yes. What, you threw your twenty years of research, I know you've done a lot for the nation and in this area, okay. In those years, again, eh, what has been the improvements, what has been the, the, um. Areas that you concentrated on eh, quite, eh, yeah, the, I know it's a broad area. But you know, the quite eh, yeah, and, and within this legislation, you, what made you think through, to put this legislation together in this way? At each spinning now, what did you see in your research, what did you see in your, in your, um, thoughts that, that? Wanted you to pursue this along with whoever's happy in the development of this legislation, again, eh, to get off this mission.
I said, um. Henderson, you may respond.
Oh, should you add? So the big driving force behind this policy is the rates of smoking among our youth, our Navajo youth. Um, I think for all of us as, as leaders in our own field, that is our focus is who's gonna carry the work after we're gone. And in my area of focus, you know, it's always been the youth, the Navajo youth, what is happening to the Navajo youth? You know, what are their thoughts, what are, what are, what are their behaviors, what's driving them to? To, to, to do certain things, and in this case, it's smoking. As I pointed out, um, the, in the two thousand seventeen Navajo Youth Risk Behavior Survey, among high school students. So they surveyed ten thousand students every three years, they were supposed to do it this past, uh, this past year in two thousand twenty, but due to COVID. The, due to the pandemic, that wasn't done, but so the latest data we have for the youth. Is that forty one percent of our Navajo youth have tried cigarette smoking in their lifetime. Fourteen percent of them have tried smoking before they were even thirteen years old. They were also asked of the, of the high school students, how many of them have tried e-cigarettes in the past thirty days? Forty percent. Twenty four percent of them have used smokeless tobacco and fifty four percent of these youth have used, are trying to quit. Commercial tobacco, so all these products that I listed are addictive in nature, they're, they're nicotine. Plays a major role in addiction, um, but it's not the addiction that we're concerned about. In terms of policy development, because addiction is, is basically a health, a mental health issue. The outcome is the, the things that are coming off of it, in this case, it's chemicals that are not good. So this is for the youth, among Navajo adults. We have found out that nineteen percent of Navajo men smoke cigarettes currently. It's a little lower for, for women. But if you were to break, and this is a research document that was presented, um, several years ago, um, that I'm a co-author on. Or actually, I'm the primary author on it, when you break it down by age cohort, meaning that if you break it down by. From fifteen to twenty five, twenty six to thirty two, thirty three to forty five, if you look at those age groups, it's the youngest. Age group cohort that have the highest rates of smoking, even higher than the general population. What research shows that it is if you establish policies that create smoke free environment. These numbers will go down quickly. What also is gonna happen is that. Is that heart attacks are gonna go down, this is totally driven by research. Helena Montana passed a smoke free law several year, years ago. And what they found is post smoke free environment, uh, the post pre smoke free policy, their rates of heart attacks were in. Invar, especially heart attacks were very high. But when they established smoke free laws, their heart attack rates went down quickly. I don't have the data on the number of heart attacks that have taken place. Post gaming, because this really, we're talking about gaming here. What has happened, this is a question as a scientist that I have. And we've talked about it with multiple people, is prior to gaming having smoking environments? What was this, what was the heart attack rate for Navajo Nation? Especially the, among those communities where there's casinos. And then what has happened afterwards? When, when, um, the smoking was allowed, people were going to these environments. And so that, that I, that, that's the data that we have for Navajo people. When you look at mortality data across Indian country, when we look at smoking. And this is another paper that I can certainly share with you that I'm a co-author on. Their mortality of stroke, cancer and heart disease, heart attacks are the highest among American Indian smokers. So this policy is gonna help an addiction that's gonna help our people. Even more so, and I think this is something that we all need to understand. That many of our Navajo people that work on the casino floors, just look around. You know, when it opens up fully again, or remember the last time you were there, how many of them were young women of childbearing age? That. That cell of that woman who is breathing in secondhand smoke has been altered immediately. If I were to take her urine and look for cancer biomarkers, I will find cancer in her body. Cancer biomarkers in her body, so it's immediate. The child that she's gonna have, nine months, the one that she has in her right now, the one that's gonna be born. In five years, they've been impacted already, that's how these cancer toxins work. They don't just clear out immediately, they linger in your body. So that unborn child that we're thinking about, and that's where our work is in policy development, that's where your work is. That unborn child did not choose to be born into, to an environment where she's, he or she is exposed to cancer biomarkers. So I think we, we really need to make that distinction between freedom of rights, which I totally support. But also the right of the unborn, the children. And a lot of our children, I've been to, I love to go to the gaming facilities there in Twin Arrows. The secondhand smoke does not just stay on the gaming floor, it lingers into the lobby. It goes into the restaurants, it goes into the hotel rooms. And I asked multiple times, where's the OSHA, Navajo OSHA, to really take measurements of what was happening post Co, pre COVID. Let them do the ones to do the investigation of the air quality. Not somebody that is hired by gaming that is not familiar with the science. The, and I say this out of respect for that organization, but. With, when you look at measurements of air quality, it is done to the tiniest, tiniest cells. We're not looking at golf ball, we're not looking at basketball particles, we're looking down to like really tiny particles that. Are very hard to detect, but only certain machines are able to pick that up. So I, I, I apologize for, for going over, but I, I'm hoping that I answer your question. That it is because of the youth, the youth mo, mobile, um, is the one that really pushes us, it is the youth that are asking for this. It, smoking is an addiction. And it, and secondhand smoke causes cancer, causes heart disease, causes respiratory disease. And we, we have even addressed the workers who are gonna be coming back who have COVID. Who, and who are long haulers. We have even talked about that. Will gaming be responsible for their healthcare costs, which will be extraordinary if they're exposed to secondhand? So these are all topics that we need to talk about as we're kind of just, not just focusing, focusing on the revenues, but. I guess it's, it's, our health, our mental health, our physical health, our spiritual health are so important. That's what our elders have shared with us. Basically, enough lately, it eh. You know, the, the, the thought that the revenues are gonna go down thirty percent, fifteen to thirty percent. Take into consideration that cut and, you know, we have great businessmen that are running the organization, the gaming organization. Make adjustments for that, if that is what you're predicting. But I truly know that that thirty percent comes from the tobacco industry. They use this scare tactic with hotels, with restaurants, with bars, with when everybody across the United States is wanting to do that. And we can go back to their documents to show that, those numbers are not real. And with that, I just, um.
Dr. Nez Henderson.
Yes.
There was a, a, a direct question from Honorable Stewart, and he's asking about. The research data on the Navajo Nation and also you. Could we get clarification on smoke lingering into rooms and other area at gaming facilities? Would you provide documentation on those? Thank you, back to you.
So what we can do, should change, and uh, is we can provide all that information to you about all the data for the youth. That is information that is available on the Navajo, the Navajo Department of Health website, um, under the epidemiology. If you just put in, um, youth survey, you, all that, all that data will come up and actually it's really stunning if you really look at the trends. And then in terms of what is happening, in terms of the air quality. We can do, I'm, I'm a scientist by training, okay? And it's a natural experience, this experiment, what we can do is fill. The room there in Twin Arrows as an example, fire out with smoke, get everybody out. Get some of the top scientists that are unbiased towards this issue, let them measure the air quality once. After we simulate, make that, make their room be filled with smoke, you know? And then measure what is happening on the floor, in the lobby, in the, this is actually would be better in Twin Arrows. Just to, to make that, like, to simulate that environment. And it will show and date, there is plenty of data to show that smoke, huh, smoke doesn't have any boundaries. Smoke lingers, smoke doesn't recognize that you're in a lobby, or smoke doesn't recognize that you're supposed to stay in a, um, on a smoking floor. It's like, I actually use this analogy because with youth, because they understand what this means, it's like peeing in a pool. When you pee in a pool, those molecules of pee go everywhere, that is how smoke is. And I can get that data for you as well, just how volatile and just passive smoke is, and I can certainly get that for you.
Thank you very much. Honorable Daniel, she had the floor.
Mr. Chair, um, thank you very much, Kudota, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay, um, thank you very, Kudota. Should, should not, um, then again, Kudota, our vice chair, though. I don't think Kudota, members of our resources and development committee, Kudota. I don't Kudota, should say. Legislation, Kudota, hit on me, so, so, I don't know, Kudota, your agent, Kudota, Kudota, I'm not, Kudota. Um. He, yeah, yeah, where? What I should, that, that, Kaya, go. Was she in a, yeah, who, who, yeah, Kudota, I don't Kudota, remember, yeah, Kudota. Did she, Kudota? My good chief from many forms. Kudota, remember, yeah, yeah, I don't think Kudota, eh, Kudota, eh, Kudota, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't quit, I see, but, 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 I can't, so, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, 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 I don't know. I'll eat, eh, I'm, oh, yeah, Kudota. I don't know, Kudota. This is me, Kudota. I see, oh, Kudota, the me, but not that. Eh, Kudota, so, so, oh, it's, eh, it's, Kudota. I don't know, Kudota, should tell you, I don't know, Native American Church. I do, so, oh, it's, eh, it's, eh, I see, so, Kudota, eh, I'm, I'm, Kev. Hunhunke, sa'ha'ha, the, eh, ah, is bi'ja, na'inska'ho, ne'ilka'lo. Oh, Kudat, eh, Kudot, otla, la'adat, eh, Kudot. Oh, eh, Kudot, eh, eh, joh, eh, oh, to be, ah, dahwin, it, eh, Kudot. Ah, the Nana, Kudot, so, thul, thul, no, da, hot, eh, shi, jia'la'gi, shesha'otla, thul, thul, no. Oh, Kudat, eh, Kudot. Ah, ni, hot, eh, ni'ri, ah, dahvis, ago. Ah, ni, hot, eh, ni'ri, di, ah, ni'ri, na'le'ba'wan, obda, joka, ah, lo, da. Oh, eh, Kudot, ni'ri, na'da'li, si, da, la, oh, da, na'da'lt, ah, la, ho. Ah, the Nana, Kudot, be'la'na'az, tral, eh, lo, Kudot, no, smoking. Da'ma, ka'la, Kudot, eh, si, na'az, la, na'no, da'alt, ah, la. So, ya'ba'has, ni'eh, go, ah, the Nana, eh, so, common sense, ah, da, ah, Kudot, ah, sa'lt, shuna, memt, ah, yesthi, Kudot. The Nani, Llinniki, Kudot. We have six cents, ah, so, mem, ben, ah, yesthi. Bel'agana, bel'agana, but, sa'la, gray, Llinniki. Eh, ah, skla'ye, shno. Ah, the Nani, Llinniki, the, ah, hu, it, ah, swill, eh. Shno, memt, ah, yesthi, sa'lt, shuna, common sense. So, hot, eh, Kudot. Ah, Kudot. Ah, ni, hot, eh, ni, Kudot, ba'ye'ltki, Kedot. Ah, ni, ah, ah, na'la, hot, eh, dis. Ah, hot, joka'la, ah, le't, so, ah, the, ba'ansa'ak, Kedot, ah, eh, le't, ah, so, gis, ah, hot, joka'la, ah, le't, so, ah, na'na', eh, da. Eh, ba'ba'ansas, ke, ah, Kudot. Ah, hot, eh, Kudot, ah, asin, so, ah, the Kui'osin, ah, da'is, vi, Kudot. Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Asin, eh, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Asin, so, eh, beh, so, eh, yahanai, ah, Kudot, ni'ri, dam, gaming, ah, Jua. Ah, yahanai, eh, ah, be'has, ni'eh, Kudot, eh, ah, be'has, ni'eh, Kudot, ah, the Nana, Kudot, shushas, knee, Kudot. Ni'ri, dam. MGS, ah, the Nana, eh, P'bari, ta'neel, tsiz. So, ah, eh, pe'anki, ta'neel, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. Be'chin, si, eh, Kudot, be'chin, si, ni'shi, ay, si, Jeh. Shie'ba'na'is, eh, khande, ah, hot, eh, da, kar, eh, ah, be'da'is, ka't, oboh, eh, za. So, eh, ni'ki, ba'ba'ansas, ke, ah, so, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Ah, na'joo, sh'aj, ah, Jua, the, be'chin, sa'la, Kudot, ni'ke, ah, ka'ago. T'eh, t'eh, eh, sa'la, ho. So, eh, Kudot, eh, ba'neit, eh, ni'ri, gaming. Ah, Jua, da, da'in, shiki, eh, Kudot. Neto, so, ah, eh, ke, eh, Kudot, eh, 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 ba'neit, eh, so. Ah, Kuh, ah, ni, hot, eh, ni'ri, dam. Shup, ah, ba'ansas, ke, so, perhaps, ni'ri, eh, maybe, the, somewhere in the legislation, ah, don, ni'ri, dam. We can include, um, more, like, eh, these, ah, gaming, ah, ah, one, eh, dam, eh, casino floors, ah, da, eh, go. Perhaps, um, um, better and more ventilation, hot, ah, asin, so, boh, net, sa'la, Kudot. So, hot, eh, Kudot, ah, joka'la, hot, eh, na'le'ba'ho, ah, no, da, joka'la, hot, ah, shet, shet, ah, Jush, Jushshin, eh, Kudot, ah, na'at, ah, na'at, ah, Jushshin. Ah, she, eh, she, do, ah, so, ah, le'khan, ah, da'alt, shen, le, ho. Oh, Kudot, ah, eh, ni'ri, Jua, dam, bel'agana, so'ga'la, ah, lo, ah, da, ah, la, oh, Kudat, eh, Kudot, ah, dahvis, ago. Oh, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Shusas, eh, do, eh, Kudot, ah, asin, so, eh, Kudot, I really support our enterprise, Kudot. Um, Navajo Nation Enterprises, eh, Jeh, eh, Ghi. Asin, so, na'ha, na'ha, al, shun, eh, yah, long, ah, yots, ah, Kudot. Ah, the Nana, bah, eh, eh, Kudot, eh, neto, eh, Ghi, joh, eh, ba'ba'neit, eh, Kue'gi. Ah, Kuh, ni'ri, dam. So, the, Jua, ah, the Nana, Kudot. Bahna', hot, eh, le, eh, Kudot. Ah, asin, da, na'ald, sh. Na'la'ha'gi, da, eh, Kudot, eh, sh'al, shun, eh, da, da'ila. Oh, eh, Kuna, ah, ah, Kuna, de, oh, Kudat, eh, ni'ri, na'na', to. Na', na', oh, the, Kui'as, we, da'al, tral, eh, Kudat, eh, so, da, eh, lo, ah, Jua. Eh, do, ba'ba'ansas, ke, Kudot. Ah, Kuh, ah, shusas, knee, oh, Kudat, asin, so, eh, na', to. Da, 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 ah, Kuna, eh, eh, shos, ah, Kudat, eh, Ghi. Ah, the, ah, da, do, eh, na'al, tral, ah, Kudat, eh, bebe, na'os, ka'la. Oh, eh, 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 so, da, eh, Kuh, Kudot, be'da', joka'la, ah, la, ho. So, Kudat, eh, Kudot. So, eh, eh, Kudot, ni'ri, dam, eh, these, ah, casino floors, ni'ri, dam, gaming, gaming, ah, go. Perhaps we can, um, come up with a, a language, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Maybe, um, um, more ventilation, so, ah, da. Ah, the, Kudot, ni'ri, dam, asin, ni'ri, dam, ni'ri, Jua, eh, ni'ri, dam, Twin Arrows, shusha'ha, ho. Eh, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Kue'gi, ah, dah, ah, dah, ah, la, Kudot, ah, the, ni'ri, joka'la, ni'ri, ah, n'ts, eh, da, ah, da, ah, la, eh, eh, si, eh, Kui's, so, ah, the, mem, eh, eh, ho, Kudot. Um, ah, ni'ri, dam, firewalls, eh, de, oh, Kudot, eh, Kudot. Ah, the, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Oh, eh, Kudot, ah, the, ah, ne'bat, chash, ah, lo. Asin, be'in, so, ah, ah, ni'ga'la, ah, sa'la, ah, la, na'na'. Ah, Kuh, ah, Kudot, ah, the, eh, bebe, na'nt, hende. Ah, the Nana, Kudot, ni'ri, bebe, dahna'al, tral, eh, lo, Kudot. Ni'ri, dam, eh, these, ah, some of these establishments, Kudot. Ni'ri, joka'la, da, be'da', na'al, tral, eh, ho. So, Kudot, mes, na's, ego, Kudot, ah, ni'ri, dam, firewall, ah, la, Jua, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Ah, Kues, na'al, shid, ah, Kued, ah, na'al, shid, ah, na'al, shid, ah, ne'bat, chash, ah, lo. Ah, be'in, so, ah, ni'ga'la, ah, sa'la, na's, eh, eh, ho. Ah, the Nana, ni'ri, Twin Arrows, so, ah, Kudat, ah, Kuh, asin, so, ni'ke, 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 ke, Llinniki, oh, ke, da, na', Llinniki. Ah, so, eh, Kudot, ah, the, eh, be'ka'as, eh, ah, eh, ah, sh'la'da, ah, ka. So, eh, si, ah, be'in, so, ah. So, Kudot, ah, oh, ye, go, eh, oh, ye, go, eh, Kudot, eh, ba'ba'ansas, ke, Kudot. Ah, the Nana, Kudot, eh, da, eh, na's, ah, so, Kudot. Eh, da, eh, na's, every, every four years. Kuna, hot, eh, na'da, eh, na's, ah. Oh, ah, the, be'de, so, ah, she, so, boh, net, sa'la, Kudot. Referendum, ah, da, ah, ya, the, eh, be'da, ha'net, sa'la, Kudot. So, Kudat, eh, eh, Kudot, eh, 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 da, ah, be. Eh, ah, Jua, dam, eh, 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 ah, so, ah, the, ba'ansas, ke. Kudot, ni'ri, dam, ah, this, ah, ah, na'it, ah, the, ah, yo, ben, cha'win. How we vote, ah, be'ben, ben, cha'win, eh, eh, Kudot. So, eh, be'na's, go, Kudot, ni'ri, dam, eh, Kudot, ah, the, the, ch'hol, yas, ah, boh, ha'net, sa'la, ah, the, ah, so, ah, ba'ansas, ke, Kudot. So, Kudat, eh, go, ba'Kudot, shusas, then, eh, asin, eh, be'da, ha'net, ah, with this amendment, eh, meh, eh, si, ah, boh, ha'net, sa'la, Kudot. Ah, the Nana, Kudot, this legislation, Kudot, is gonna move forward, Kudot, ni'ri, na'be, eh, shi, ah, Kudot, then. Perhaps, at that time, maybe, provide more, um, documentation, demographics, ah, da, eh, Ghi, ah, Kudot. Um, Kudot, ah, be'hi, la, has, eh, Kudot. Eh, ni'ki, la, ah, asin, so, boh, net, sa'la, eh, time, eh, be'na's, go, Kudot, eh, ba'ba'ansas, ke, ah, so, ah, the, ah, Kuh, ah, shis, eh. Ba'Kudot, ni'ri, dam, legislation, eh, go, eh, Kudot, eh, eh, Kudot, eh, ba'ke, ah, Kudot. Ah, Kuh, eh, be'na's, go, Kudot, memetli'ah, ah, Ghi, na'na', Kudot, eh, ba'ba', ba'ye'ltki, na'na', Kudot, ah, shunat, ah, ah, Llinniki. So, ah, ah, so, eh, ba'ba'ha, si, ah, so, ah, Kudot, ah, shusas, then, eh, Kudot, eh, memetli'ah, ah, Ghi, ah, be. Be'be, ke, sa'za, Kudot, ah, ba'ha'joo, eh, eh, ego, Kudot, eh, these, ah, gaming facilities. Ah, the, ah, the, she, eh, eh, Kudot, ah, the, Nana, the, shen, eh, da, da, eh, ah, be'in, so, eh, ah, ni'ga'la, ah, ho, Kudot. So, Kudot, eh, Kudot. So, eh, hot, ah, ah, so, ba'ha, si, ah, so, ah, eh, ye, go, eh, ba'at, oh, si, eh, ha'la, eh, Kudot. Ni'ri, fani, da, Kudot, ah, ba'la, shun, eh, da, ah, di, oh, le, Kudot, ni'ri, na'ha, Kudat, eh, shi, so. Sh'la, na'ha, ha'ne, ah, na'ha, ha'go. So, eh, hot, eh, ni'ri, with, ah, uranium, oh, Kudot, uranium. Ay, si, beh, si, kha, Kudot, ni'ke, ah, the, se, be'in, the, Kedot, ay, eh, Kudot, eh, beh, si, kha, Kudot. Ni'ri, dam. Kudot, sa'dal, dam, shu, shu, desu, shu, sa'dati, eh, ni'ri, dam. Sa'la, shun, eh, Kudot, ah, eh, be'da', na'la, na's, eh, eh, Kudot, ah, eh, be'ben, na's, eh, Kudot, ni'ri, dam. Ah, so, ah, Jua, desu, sa'ba', buzzla, eh, er. So, eh, Kudot, ben, na's, eh, eh, na', Kudot, ah, uranium, ah, Kudot. Uranium, ay, si, Kudot, eh, eh, do, ah, the, shusas, knee, ay, eh, eh, ah, di, eh. Ah, Kuh, eh, eh, Kudot, eh, she, eh, eh, Kuh, ah, Kuh, ah, Kuh, ah, na's, ah, go. So, Kudat, eh, Kudot, bebe, da, ah, ya, she, eh, ah, the, ah, the, she, eh, eh, Kudot, ah, the, na', to, Llinniki. Oh, ye, go, eh, ba'ha, ne, hello, eh, da, na', to. As twi, as twi, da, ah, ah, eh, ya, da, ah, ne. Ni'ri, na'ha, z'ago, drab, na'ha, Navajo Nation. As twi, na'ha, la. Zuda, ah, ah, eh, eh, ya, na'ha, ne. Eh, be'ba'ha, ne, hello. Ha'ne, be'da, di, eh, lo, di, na', to, Llinniki, zuda, na', to, Llinniki, zuda, ah, ah, eh. Well, na', to, ah, the, be'chin, ah, eh. Ah, the Nana, the, Kui'osin, eh, ah, ah, da, eh, go, bel'agana, eh, ni'ri, na', be', na', to, ah, eh, ah, 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 ha'ne, be'da, di, eh, lo, Kudot. Asin, so, twi, ah, ha'ne, lo, Kudot. So, eh, eh, hot, ah, da, ah, di, ah, the, ah, the, check, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Members, have already seen. Any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote?
Uh, Chairman, can I make a comment on my motion?
Okay, yes, uh, Honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman, uh, uh, I, I guess, um, I thought, I don't know if you were gonna come back to me as a motioning party on some of these, uh, statement or comment that were made, Chairman?
Uh, you're more than welcome to speak, Honorable Begay. Go ahead.
Uh, Chairman, uh, Jua, uh, ha'joo, uh, I guess this is a good setting of, uh, discussion of an issue. That severely will affect each, in everyone's, uh, body. Uh, where we go, how we go, and how we do about anything. Uh, everyone else, what, asin, he, da, eh, Ghi, uh-oh. Ah, the, the understanding, I couldn't even gar, argue, uh, uh, or, or colleague, I mean, or, or agent. Of her expertise in, in, in this particular area. Uh, with my, uh, limited education, uh, I guess, uh, uh, we, 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 we could just only be able to, uh, have an understanding of, uh, some of these issues that we deal with, eh, as a legislature. I mean, that's the key thing, oh, be'spans, on, eh, ah, Kuh, ah, it's always a two side. And that's where we listen, and yes, each, 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 each of these, uh, 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 two side has arguments of, uh, how to, uh, provide the, uh, information. Ah, Kuh, ah, I, I'm not sure when will be the best time, uh, to cut the facility. Ba'ba'neit, eh, knee, do, ye, eh, ke, ha'ta, zhi, the, Kudot, uh, some, I would say, uh, I don't know if the accusation is appropriate word. Uh, to say that a lot of these smokes are lingering, uh, in this area. And then maybe, a neat, a scientific explanation is that, I mean, when does this particular, uh, smoke expires in air, at what point? I guess that's the key thing that would, uh, if we're gonna go very much in technical about, uh, uh, this particular issue. And aside from smoking, I mean, what else is also at the same level of a smoke? That would, is also danger to the public of, uh, of a facility. Look at, Kudot, na'nsi, ki, ba'ya'thi. Ah, Kuh, ah, again, what it comes with, the shun, eh, again, that's the choice of the applicant. To say that this is the environment I'm going to, to be in. Like, eh, we chose to become delegates. And we know what it comes with when it comes to some chapter level and facing the public. Uh, of all these activities, ba'nda, al, deh, ki, what we, we face on a daily base, and we chose, and we, uh, 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 already knew what we will, what we will be facing as a public figure, in public, on the Navajo Nation. Ah, Kuh, ah, ah, Jo, eh, kwa, eh, Ghi, ki, ah, 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 t'shna, jobe, ba'Kun, it, si. Ah, Kuh, ah, khit, ah, la, eh, di, khat, ah, Jua, chaz, ah, Jua. I mean, Jo, the, Kui'osin, ta'da, di, khat, ah, ta'di, ya. Ah, Kuh, ah, Jo, be'ben, na'Jua. Jo, 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 it goes back, eh, I mean, I, I supported the facility establishment when I was, uh, what was it, uh, several council. Eka, it, da, established, li'ya, eh, da, which the pe, the people, eh, eh, favored, oh. Ah, the, the use of alcohol. Uh, service, it's alcohol, again, it, it went through the process. Ah, Kuh, ah, Jua, be'na's, eh, to some extent, people knows the environment. Ah, Jua, bel'chaz, ah, knee, be'ha, ha, the, eh, ki, joh, eh, kwa, eh, ki, the, Nani, Llinniki, in, sa', ke, si, ki, di, da. Sh'la, eh, so, tral, you have to be twenty-one years older, ka'la. Ah, Kuh, ah, eh, she, ah, ni, joh, eh, Kud, eh, n'ts, ah, to. Ha'joo, ba'ansa'ak, ke, ah, the, main, eh, it, da, uh, di, ni, Kudot, the agent had indicated that, eh, so, ina, ho, t'lehi, it, and, I mean, which is true. But, the purpose, it, da, and the reason why they're, they're strategically located, if you look at it. Eh, the, na', to, eh, ni'ga'la, ki, eh, so, ye, in, hich, eh, Kui, do, li. Joo, jo, jo, that was the overall intent of it. Ah, Kuh, ah, the, Nian, yet, ha'da, the, ka, to, Nian, da, kha'y. Ah, Kuh, eh, ah, Jua, eh, be'ba'hsa, la, oh. Ah, the, di, khat, na'nsi, ha'ni, knee, again. I'd sure like to hear directly from the gaming enterprise, maybe at the next meeting. To say that, okay, these are some areas by some individuals. I would, right now, say, assuming that things are done. Or being, or, or happening at these facilities, which is affecting even a person that's gonna, had not to do with the gaming, but chose to just, uh, have a sleepover there, but yet has, uh, uh, encountered inhaling certain amount of, uh, smoke. Ah, Kuh, ah, kwa, eh, ki, ki, eh, eh, Kuh, eh, kwa, eh, ki, um, I, I, I guess, I need some type of, uh, a data. And, and, and anything of that nature. So, any hotel that you go to off the reservation, oh, Kud, na', da, da, ah, ka'la, even though it says, there's no smoking in room, ni, Kuh. Bel'agana, da, do, ah, kha'y, da, da, oh, na', zing, Kuh. Bel'agana, nda'al, ah, la, oh, ah, ira, da, the designated area of smoking, ha'ni, la. So, anyway, I, 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 I'm not, I'm just trying to also, I guess, counter, uh, a lot of these, uh, document. I mean, the scientific, ha'ni, knee. Ah, Kuh, ah, I mean, how much more of a scientific data is gonna convince me to say, uh, yeah, this is true? And it, to me, I don't think, I don't need that much of a data to say, for me to say that, eh, the, the, the truth in of what you're, uh, presenting. Eh, ah, dan, ke, joh, eh, ba'has, ni'eh. But my only, our only point is, is that this is an area that I think that shouldn't really be, uh, 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 be blanked, uh, to be part of this legislation. Binti, ah, Jua, eh, chaz, ah, ah, Kuh, the, na', to, eh, ni'ga'la, ki, eh, so, yah, it, ah, ah, ki, joh, eh, wins, and eh, si, eh, eh, but, jo, the, sh, the, sh, ni, ah. The people chose to drive, the, the link, to get to this particular facility, knowing what it, it entails. Bel'ndas, eh, to, bel'chaz, ah, knee, ah, Jua. Ah, Kuh, ah, even though, eh, the, 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 there's two areas here. It's east, ye, go, ba'hi, to, ah, ti, no, ba'ye'ltki, but, I mean, but, but, but we're allowing also people to, yeah, go ahead, I mean, don't smoke, but go ahead, and also have some mental issue. Of, uh, getting addicted to gaming and losing the money, of, uh, 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 of, uh, wasting, wasting all the money, or gamble all your money, and have a social problem at home. Ah, 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 Jua, ki, la, eh, it, ah, st'op, ba'neit, eh, da. If we were gonna go at that level, in, in, in making certain argument about, uh, such a facility. Oh, do, do, ah, ah, the, Tlandi, eh, so, ah, Jua, eh, so, the, Nani, Llinniki, ah, Kuh, um, ah, Jua, bel'chaz, ah. Ah, Kuh, ah, Jua, la, eh, so, khit, ah, eh, to, ba'neit, eh, da, eh, so, ah, Jua. Di, khat, ah, it, la, do, it, la, Kuh, kwa, eh, ki, ye, go, na'ha, the, to, eh, to, ah, na'chaz, ah, do, di, ta'ha, na'chui, do, ah, so, be't, ah, do. Uh, uh, bebe, ta'da, ah, khat, eh, eh, ki, da, hot, eh, jo, ni, Kuh, ah, da. Joo, ah, Jua, eh, to, ba'neit, eh, da, eh, so, ti, da. Ah, Kuh, ah, ben, na'Jua, go, and I know majority of our Navajo people are, are reasonable, understanding, and, and, and know, knows the, uh, the, 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 what they're, will be encountering. And na'ha, eh, ki, ki, kwa, eh, ki. Eh, joo, eh, eh, kwa, eh, ki, ki, just, just, just because, uh, that, uh, the, the, the gaming facility aren't able to defend, uh, uh, of, of armament, eh, ki, ben, na', Kuh, Kudot, eh, Kud, eh, ni, do, khat, ah, khat, it, si, eh, do, shet, ni, da, ti. But, 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 jo, ben, na', Kudot, um, be, 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 da, da, to, ah, Kuh, khat, da'in, shiki, ki. Joo, eh, di, ki, ha'ta, eh, na', and then maybe, ah, ah, ni, li, la, hot, khat, eh, shah, t'shun, eh, ki. I mean, uh, uh, Kudot, ah, the, bel'chaz, ah, so, Kudot, eh, si, smoke free, do, ah, the, Kudot, eh, Nanda, ah, la, ki. Bel'chaz, ah, ah, da, ah, da, ah, da, taht, taht, na's, ah, but, eh, then, again, again, that smoke is being, I don't know, I mean, do we just, the, 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 osh, oh, kun, oh, ko'osh, oh. Uh, ah, bit, ah, ti, z'oh, sh'ah, Jua, go, I mean, exhaust system, ha'ni, knee, but yet, people outside, eh, khat, ah, the, uh, 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 atih, na'da, ye, ye, atih, atih, na'da, hi, tzi'la. Eh, na'da, hi, t'zi'la, eh, so, oh, oh. Ah, Kuh, ah, kwa, eh, ki, shis, eh, zing, ki, ben, ses, ke, so, ah, dish, shun, and, ah, yeah, this is only at the committee level, I can, it's, uh, already see how this, the debate's gonna be at the full council. Kuh, ah, ben, na'Jua, go. Ah, kwa, eh, ki, she, shes, che, ah, then, tun, tun, be'ch, eh, ye'ltki, to, ba'ye'ltki. Ah, the, Kudot, ni'ri, ah, shes, che, yah, ha, si, eh, ta, in, his, za, eh, eh, go. Eh, eh, go, in, his, ah, na'dali, so, la, eh, ilta, eh, t'ji, eh, eh, khat, eh, go, ch'eh, ba's, ah, st'eh, ah, ba'ya's, st'eh, di, eh. In, za, ah, Llinniki, our Navajo language is really, uh, could be interpreted in so many ways of what we intentionally had indicated and wanted to say is being misinterpreted. Ah, Kuh, eh, be'ben, na'Jua, go, Kudot, joo, shis, eh, zing, eh, t'shun, eh, ah, eh, di, kha, ben, ni'ah, ah, ki. Ha'joo, ta'Jua, ki, binti, bel'chaz, ah. Ah, the, Kudot, shi, be't, eh, di, ah, eh, eh, go, nda, haz, eh, do, hot, ah, be'ni, eh, shko, ah, eh, and, and, I, I, I have made certain comments. When gaming facility or gaming, uh, uh, Kudot, in, da, na'kha, khat, kwa, eh, ki, di, da, hot, eh. Like, we talk about housing, we talk about, uh, 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 the, the low pay, or anything else. Kudot, in, eh, da, l'ski, ah, the, ye, go, na'ha, ba'ah, ah, kha'la, ya, do, khat, ah, da'in, shi, oh, di, na'. And then I'm sure this is one thing that we'll say, ha'joo, T'Nan, Llinniki, ta, da, ilta, eh, t'zi, to, da, ah, the, si, eh, eh, ilta, eh, z'oh, khat, ah, chaz, ah, na'shi, di, no, eh, so. Be'be, ch'ye'ltki, to, leh, eh, so, ah, Jua, on, sin, shah. Ah, kwa, eh, ki, she, be'ben, na'Jua, go, eh, ti, uh, na'joo, sh'ha, ni, knee, ah, Jua, ki, bel'chaz, ah, knee. Uh, uh, ah, eh, it, ah, the, tun, tun, ha'ta, eh, ah, she, boh, ha'net, sa. Ah, Kuh, ah, di, khat, oh, eh, 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 so, yah, da, no, taht, ni, eh, ki, joo, eh, she, ah, Jua, sa'ho, ya, I don't know, ya, ta'ha, ya, ta'ch, oh, eh, eh, to, and they know that it's, it's really gonna affect their, 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 their body, and so on. Uh, but yet, ah, ni, she, Kudot, Navajo Nation, eh, Llinniki, do, ye, go, we don't provide sufficient, proper, adequate, overall, uh, preventive, uh, uh, statements to our Navajo people. Eh, ta, eh, ba't, eh, ta'hol, no, di, be'ba't, eh, ta'hol, no, di, ta'Jua, n'ts, eh, Kuh, eh, la, Kuh, na'ilt, oh, Kuh, ah, eh, she. So, eh, eh, go, in, eh, Nani, knee, be'be, ch'ye'ltki, da. Ah, Kuh, ah, khat, eh, da, eh, khat, I don't know how many people are online, but how mu, how much of our argument, our, 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 I guess, our statements is being heard to, to the general Navajo people. Oh, la, eh, ba'ya'ta, t'yo, di, legislation, di, za, di, ni. Ah, Kuh, ah, the public comment, ah, da, eh, then, I guess, we only, uh, there's only two public supporting, and then one opposing, ma'ka. And how do we take that to the overall general Navajo Nation population? So, eh, eh, kwa, eh, ki, ah, what, eh, shes, che. Uh, ah, then, uh, legislation, in, eh, so, z'ki, to, ah, the, Kudot, tun, tun, b'ha, hosen, being the chair, I mean, uh, uh, Kudot, the committee. There's a purpose of an action, a purpose for it to be presented to a committee. How we do it, again. Taht, ah, Nani, Llinniki, ba'ndi, kha, eh, eh, so, uh, joo, she, sh'la, eh, na', ba't, khat, eh, shah. Ah, the, ah, Jua, khat. Uh, shu, shu, na', bel'chaz, ah, na'ji, ki, ah, the, ya, t'ha'da, ah, ah, ki, joo, ben, ni, eh, hot, ah, bel'chaz, ah, eh, so. Joo, ah, the, ah, eh, ni, ah, Llinniki, eh, so, the, eh, bebe, be'da'in, ni, eh, so, hot, ah, ye, ye, eh, eh, ni, eh. So, the, Kui'osin, bebe, ni, eh, jeh, joo, t'shun, eh, ki, joo, eh, kwa, eh, ki, eh, so, eh, so, ba'ba'ansas, ke, so, ah, dish, shes, eh, zing, eh. Ah, Kuh, ah, di, ah, hot, eh, go, go, Kudot, be'ben, na's, eh, na', um, ha'na, si, ah, so, even though there wasn't a direct question, but there was additional comments that were made, uh, on, on this particular, uh, legislation, and based on the, uh, legisla, on the amendment that I- based on the legislature, on the amendment that I've about motion. Uh, been. Chairman?
Thank you, Honorable Gaye, for your questions and comments. Your your concerns are are very important to have this law created. And actually, let me give some time back over to Honorable Chairman Daniel Sewell and your agent, Dr. Nez Henderson. Honorable Chairman Sewell. Press star six to unmute. Hello?
Chairman Nez, are you calling for uh for Daniel or my?
Can you hear me?
I'm calling for the sponsor. Honorable Chairman Sewell, the sponsor of the legislation.
Okay. Um. Um, Honorable uh Chair. I don't. Hey. Oh, so. Amendment. The legislation. Gaming. On the. Uh, the. Okay, it's. Okay, please. Does. Okay. On the. Okay. Uh, the. You mountain casino. Yeah, advertise. We have a smoke-free environment. I'm see. I don't. Have a website. Okay. So I don't. Navajo gaming. I don't see health order. Oh, I don't know. I don't know. He be his own. He could help order. It that's not even in tribal code. But the health order they're abiding by. But. Um, oh, yeah, um. Okay. But. Okay. Uh, I don't. Do uh she. Oh, then. The. Is. I don't know. I don't know. I don't. I saw. I need. They know. Oh, I just. Send the. I don't know. The. He on that. Okay. Oh, I don't know. No, that. Don't know. I don't. It doesn't. Okay, I be his own. So I. Gaming. And the. Okay, I. Don't know. Okay, I don't. I don't know. I don't. China. Oh, I don't. I don't. Be. His own. Be. Yeah, I can. Yeah, I know. I don't. Yes, there'll be a reduction in the revenues. But as everybody becomes accustomed to this aspect of a smoke-free environment within the gaming facilities, then the revenue recovers. Okay, I. Um. I don't. Uh, I don't. Be. Okay. I don't. Uh, I don't. I don't. I don't. I. I don't. Okay. So I. Well, in that aspect. Just send this legislation without the amendment. Who know me? I. Then I'm not the only one debating for it. You will open it up to the rest of the eighteen other delegates. But I. Okay, I thought it would be locked in. Okay. I. I don't. Okay. On behalf of the other doc- uh colleagues. I'm getting text messages. How come? Call-in number wasn't provided? How come we uh we can't listen? And I just put on there. They're transitioning to a new advisor and I sent out the email that had only been sent to RDC and myself and certain other individuals. So it wasn't sent to the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, so that's how come they're not on this call right now. I been. Okay. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. Where we can all debate. But I. So. Uh, Chair, um, Nez. That will be my response. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Sewell. With with your um concerns on the agenda, let me uh ask staff, Ms. Gaye, about the agenda.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, uh, I just want to state that the past couple days, we've been experiencing internet problem. However, we did post the um proposed agenda on the Navajo Nation Council website. That is the mechanism that gives public notification to the people. And so the information did go out. We have sixty-seven people on the call. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gaye, for that. I don't. The. I don't. We have to post the agenda and we do that, it's always posted. The call-in number is right, pretty much at the top where it says regular meeting prep, agenda present, and then location. There's a call-in number, one six six nine dash nine zero zero dash six eight three three, ID seven three two six two eight two five six six, passcode eight six five one five. So everybody that's um out there, you're more than welcome to listen in. This is a public meeting and this is what committees do, is they do their work at the committee levels and depending on the legislation, where and who has final authority. In this case, legislation zero one seventy-four dash twenty-one, uh, the full Navajo Nation Council has the authority, but expect for all committees, um, this one started with Health, Education and Human Services Committee, as well as Law and Order Committee and Budget and Health Committee, as well as um Resources and Development Committee. The full Navajo Nation Council. Okay, we're on amendment one to this legislation. There's a motion by Honorable Kialan Bigay, second by Honorable Stewart. I believe it's time to call for the questions and vote on the amendment. So are there any other comments, Honorable Members of RDC, or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and vote on the amendment. One, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Vice Chair Walker votes red, a text in his vote, Honorable Bigay.
Uh, Chairman Kialan votes green, thank you.
Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
We have a vote of four in favor, one opposed, chair not voting, motion carries permit one. Back to the main motion, any other comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? On the main motion. Honorable Kialan Bigay?
Uh, Chairman Kialan votes green, thank you.
Honorable Daniels? Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland? Honorable Daniels, go ahead.
Um, was there a question or?
Uh, we're voting on the main motion then.
Okay, okay, I vote green.
Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker? We have a vote of four in favor, zero, chair not voting, motion carries for legislation zero one seventy-four dash twenty-one. Thank you, Honorable Chairman Daniel Sewell and your agent, Dr. Nez Henderson. Next, legislation zero one ninety-four dash twenty-one. Ms. Gaye, could you read this in for the record, please?
Mr. Chair and members of the Resource Development Committee, you have legislative summary sheet for tracking number zero one nine four dash twenty-one. The date on it is September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Title of the resolution and action relating to resource development, budget and finance, Nava Kiyate Committee, approving and authorizing the contract between the Navajo Nation and the United States Department of Interior under twenty-five USC Section five three zero one at sec. Public law ninety-three six thirty-eight as amended for a three-year term for the housing improvement program, approving and authorizing the fiscal year annual funding agreement and scope of work for the period of the contract term. This particular legislation is sponsored by Honorable Wilson Stewart and co-sponsored by Mark Freeland. Resolution is assigned to Resource Development Committee, Budget and Finance, Nava Kiyate Committee. The packet was posted on the council website on September tenth, twenty twenty-one. Five-day comment period ended on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. All of the exhibits that are referenced in the content of the legislation are attached to the packet that was sent to you. And again, the packet was posted on the council website and there was no comments supporting, opposing, or just commenting on the packet was received by the. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, back to you. This legislation will be read fully into the record when it reaches the Nava Kiyate Committee. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Gaye, for reading the into the record. Honorable Members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. And before we move forward, I'd like to say welcome to Honorable Nate Brown. Nate Brown, are you on the call?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah. I don't. Best. Uh, Resource and Development Committee. I don't um to our staff and then uh to Ms. Shami Bigay, thank you for all your work. And I don't.
Thank you. We also have on the call with us Honorable Eugene Sewell. Honorable Sewell? Thank you, Honorable Sewell. Honorable Members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second for legislation zero one ninety-four dash twenty-one.
Chairman Freeland?
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second by?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Bigay, thank you. Honorable Stewart, uh, Honorable Daniels? Were you one to second or would you like to say something?
Mr. Chair, uh, I'm okay, I wanted to second, but I thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart, you have twenty minutes.
Oh, yeah, I'm not a chairman, Nez. Vice Chair Walker. Colleagues. For the uh listening in on our RDC. Colleagues and all the Nigay for the uh listening in on our RDC meeting. According to the legislation, Nigay, uh, zero one ninety-four dash twenty-one. According to Asia Agents, AKA, um, introduce. Uh, my agents are Mister Patrick Dalguy, I don't know, Dr. Yelloman. How the area, this legislation is from the Division of Community Development, the CHID program. This is a three-year um term, again, for the uh Housing Improvement Program. And we are, this is an issue that we all are aware of, especially us from RDC and our colleagues that work closely with their chapters. So, okay, even that, I want to give them, um, introducing themselves and hand it forward to them. Shanae, Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Stewart. And your agents that you identified is Doctor Yelloman and Mister Patrick Dalguy. Doctor Yelloman, you have the floor, as well as Mister Patrick Dalguy. Either one of you.
Good morning, uh, Chair Nez. I don't know if you had. Uh, good morning to all members of RDC and uh members also calling in from the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council uh and to staff. And here to our sponsor, Mister uh Delegate Wilson Stewart. Um, thank you for assisting and supporting uh BCD and the CHID program. The Division of Community Development, we have been moving forward with facilitating and um strategizing many of the ARPA projects and project listings. In addition, we've been tasked um as divisions to seek other funding outside of the ARPA funds that have arrived to the nation. And we've been very fortunate through the CHID program under the leadership and management of Mister Dalguy um to seek and receive additional funds. Um, so Mister Chair, I'd like to um call on Mister Dalguy to go into a little bit more detail on the type of funding or the amount of funding and the type of services that will be performed and how we plan to go about um reaching those families um who have been on our listing. Um, so if I can call on Mister Dalguy, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Yelloman. Mister Dalguy, you have the floor.
Yeah, the um Chair, uh, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, you may proceed.
Okay, yeah, yeah, none. Um, Chair, auto Vice Chair, uh, RDC members, uh, also staff and um listeners uh out there listening um to this uh, to this meeting this morning. Um, so I'd just like to share um and provide a little overview and uh on the Housing Improvement Program, which is a program funded under the uh BIA ninety-three six thirty-eight and um which is uh uh under the Community Housing Infrastructure Department, which I oversee, I do uh within the Division of Community Development. Go ahead and proceed um and share some information on the Housing Improvement Program regarding this um renewal contract. Um, currently, uh, the Housing Improvement Program um is, their objective is to, you know, improve the living standards and provide safe and, you know, decent housing program or homes for uh for family members and through repairs, renovations to existing homes, also for new construction. We uh look for uh in this families are low income who meet um uh several of the eligibility criterias under the twenty-five CFR Part two fifty-six. So um also the Housing Improvement Program uh provides outreach services how they uh receive housing assistance applications through the years and they screen and determine on eligible applicants for housing assistance. Um, once these are determined, um, the information is shared and submitted to Navajo Regional Office, uh, BIA Office in Gallup, uh, New Mexico, where they will also review and determine um homes that were selected for uh funding uh assistance. And um not all applicants will be funded through this uh program due to um limited funds. So there are several applications submitted that do qualify and are considered, but based upon the uh amounts allocated on an annual basis, um, applications uh will be uh carefully reviewed and determine uh how many homes will be uh considered for funding. And uh the housing pro, the program, they uh hire um local tribal members uh for labor force. None of these homes are contracted out. They're all done with um the uh labor force throughout the nation and um they assist these families with uh homes that have um home site lease. And so uh those are pretty much uh some of the services the Housing Improvement Program provides. And um when allocations are awarded to the program, Housing Improvement Program, um included in this allocation is um eighty percent going to administration and also eighty percent going to construction and uh equipment costs and activities. So um also with the allocation amount of funding um, it gets annually um, we've averaged around six to seven homes funded. And so we've uh um have been working closely with a lot of chapters. The Housing Improvement Program has contacted some of these chapters and so and we only have right now currently two offices um operating. And um we've had the other offices uh throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, we would like to reestablish and get those uh pro, uh offices going again um due to lack of funding and then also the location of their offices uh deteriorating. Um, those also need to be improved um so they continue their daily operations at these uh offices located throughout the nation. So, so these are some of the challenges that we have currently. And um and, excuse me. And uh some of the funds have been uh been issued to the nation. Um. Have been distributed late to the nation. And so some of these constructions have begun um not on time uh due to lack of funding and also uh the funds have become available. Process of procurement also getting materials uh to these um job sites also have uh been a challenge. So within the past year in the O two, due to the pandemic, has been a struggle for the hip staff and their construction crew dealing with um the severity of the pandemic last year. And so uh they were able to um use their operations out at job sites with uh minimal services. And some of the carpenters concerned for their health. Um, and so most of these projects have um been delayed during that time. But as of this year, um, most of the homes have begun um construction again and have been completed. Certain areas, uh, we just completed uh two, three um homes within the past uh six months. And so we'd like to continue these services, uh, BIA funds. And so the reason for this legislation is to continue those services for the next three years. Um, need allocation funds to the nation. And uh hip Housing Improvement Program has a mechanism that has been working um every year and they have been successful in completing um the projects uh within budget and also within um timeline. And so um that's what uh I would like to share with the, with the RDC members. Uh, Shanae, Chair, and um I'm open to any uh questions or comments. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Dalguy. Honorable Stewart, anything you'd like to add?
No, Shanae.
Pushing on, Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions on legislation zero one ninety-four dash twenty-one? Any comments, questions? I hear none, so we'll go ahead and call for the questions and vote on this legislation. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Honorable Kialan Begay.
Chairman Kialan votes green, thank you.
Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries for legislation. Yes, Honorable.
Chairman, yes. Tom Swak, I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. The vote is now five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting on legislation zero one ninety-four dash twenty-one. This goes to Budget and Finance and then Navo-Kiaqit. Thank you, Honorable Stewart, Doctor Yelloman, and Mister Dalguy.
Oh, thank you, Shanae. Thank you, Shanae. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, um, members, and um you all have a good day. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, legislation zero one nine six dash twenty-one. Sponsor, Honorable Daniels. Ms. Begay, could you read this in for the record?
Uh, Mister Chair and members of the committee, you have legislative summary sheet for tracking number zero one ninety-six dash twenty-one. The date on it, September tenth, twenty twenty-one. Title of the resolution, action relating to resource development, Navo-Kiaqit Committee, Navajo Nation Council, supporting the United States Senate Bill S. one five three five, titled America's Red Rock Wilderness Act. This resolution, if approved, will endorse the United States Senate Bill S. one five three five, the America's Red Wilderness Act. Yeah, this legislation is assigned to Resource Development, Navo-Kiaqit, and it will be, uh, Navajo Nation Council will have final authority, sponsored by Honorable Chairman M. Daniels and co-sponsored by Honorable Seth Damon. Legislation zero one ninety-six has exhibits A and B attached to the packet. And those packet, those exhibits are attached to the legislation that was uh emailed out to you. Uh, you, you will note that this particular legislation, the exhibit A is a map that is uh that uh will identify the area. Exhibit B includes uh land that are within the boundary of the original Bear Ears National Monument established by the presidential proclamation number ninety-five fifty-eight on December twenty-eight, twenty sixteen, as are culturally and traditionally significant to many Native Americans, including the net. Uh, that's uh, this is an action that will protect those areas. You will note that the legislation was posted on the council website on September tenth, twenty twenty-one, and five-day comment period ended on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. There were no comments received. Mister Chair, members of the committee, back to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Begay. Honorable Members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Motion, Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Honorable Begay. If you have, Honorable Daniels. Before I go to Honorable Daniels, Honorable colleagues, do you have any comments or questions? I hear none. None, I will go ahead and vote on this legislation. Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
I vote green.
Honorable Begay.
Uh Chairman Kialan votes green, thank you.
Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Stewart.
Green.
We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries for legislation zero one ninety-six dash twenty-one. Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Mister Chair, uh, thank you very much. I see, I can get this, RDC. I know this legislation is moving forward to Navo-Kiaqit and also Navajo Nation Council, along with my call, uh, my agent, with Mister, uh, Honorable, uh, former council delegate, Honorable, uh, Mark Maryboy. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next, the legislation zero one ninety-seven dash twenty-one. Sponsor, Honorable Otto Sew. Honorable Otto Sew, Chairman Sew, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Ms. Begay, could you read this in for the record, please?
We have legislative summary sheet for tracking number zero one ninety-seven dash twenty-one. The date on it, September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Title of the resolution, action relating to Resource Development Committee, Budget and Finance, Navo-Kiaqit Committees, approving and authorizing the contract between the Navajo Nation, United States Department of Interior under twenty-five USC Section five three zero one at Sec. Public Law ninety-three six thirty-eight as amended for a three-year term beginning January first, twenty twenty-two and ending on December thirty-first fiscal year. Annual funding agreement and the scope of work for the period of the contract term. This legislation, uh, if approved, will authorize a contract between the Navajo Nation and United States Department of Interior for a three-year contract for the safety of dams program. Legislation is assigned to Resource Development Committee, Budget and Finance Committee, and Navo-Kiaqit Committee will have final authority. Prime sponsor of the legislation is Otto Sew. Uh, all of the exhibits that are referenced in the content of the legislation are attached. You will note that the packet was posted on the council website on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The five-day comment period ended on December twenty, twenty twenty-one. There were no comments received. Mister Chair, members of the committee, back to you. The chair members of the committee, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Begay, for reading this and to the record. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Motion, Stewart.
Here, I second.
Honorable Stewart motions, second by Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Uh, thank you for that. None, uh, this legislation goes to Budget and Finance as well as Nabikiya Kit Committee. Do you have any questions or comments on this legislation? I hear none, so we'll go ahead and vote on this legislation. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kialan, which green, thank you.
Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Our star six, unmee- Honorable Vice Chair Walker? We have a, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries for legislation zero one ninety-seven dash twenty-one. Thank you, Honorable Otto So.
Okay, thank you for the motion, Resource Development Committee. Thank you.
Next legislation, zero two hundred dash twenty-one. Well, Earl Slater, are you on the call now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Nalay, yeah, yeah. Ms. Begay, could you read this into the record, please?
You have legislative summary sheet for tracking number zero two hundred uh dash twenty-one. The date on it is September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Title of the resolution, an action relating to Resource Development Committee, Nabikiya Kit Committee and Navajo Nation Council, amending CJ N thirty-six twenty-one, section six, to extend the deadline for chapters to return to the twenty-five-person chapter meeting requirement. This resolution, if approved, will amend CJ N thirty-six twenty-one by additional hundred and eighty days for chapters to return to their twenty-five-person meeting requirement. This legislation is assigned to Resource Development, Nabikiya Kit Committee and Navajo Nation Council will have final authority. Prime sponsor is Honorable Carl Slater, co-sponsored by Honorable Seth Damon. Again, this legislation um, is amending CJ N thirty-six twenty-one, section six, where it's overstriking the ninety, ninety, one hundred eighty days. No, it says within ninety days is overstricken and adding in one hundred and eighty days. And the new language there will be unless otherwise extended through the resolution of the Nabikiya Kit Committee. Those are the amending lan- language that is recommended for approval by the uh Navajo Nation Council. You will note that the packet was posted on the council website on September sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Five-day comment period ended on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one and became eligible for RDC's consideration on September twenty-second, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Begay, for reading this into the record. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Second, Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second.
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, yeah. None, uh, this also goes to the Nabikiya Kit Committee and then the full council for approval, final authority. Before I go to Honorable Slater, Shana, uh, Nalani, do you have any comments or questions? If not, I don't hear none, so we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kialan, which green, thank you.
Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Okay, we have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries for legislation zero two hundred dash twenty-one. Honorable Carl Slater, thank you.
Yeah, Chanelle, and yeah, Shana Tony, thank you, the committee.
Oh, oh, biga, none, uh, be safe out there. Next, G, G, that's the end of our legislations, Shana. Approving to reschedule the leadership meeting with Division of Economic Development, Regional Business Development Office, Navajo Nation Land Department, Navajo Nation General Land Development Department, Historic Preservation Department, Navajo Fish and Wildlife, Navajo Environmental Protection Agency and the Bureau of Indian Affairs on business site leases on, from Tuesday, September twenty-first to the recommended date Thursday, September, yeah. That is correct, right, Mr. Tahi?
That is correct, September thirtieth.
Okay, at nine o'clock AM?
At nine o'clock AM.
Thank you, Honorable members of RDC.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Begay.
I believe we may need to uh select another date because um September thirtieth is not available for the Division of Economic Development. They have a special event happening for several of their retirees as well. Um, and so we may need to look at October, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Ms. Begay, so do we have a date open in October that we could take care of this?
I would request if Rodney has a calendar available.
Mr. Tahi?
The chair members of RDC, if you hold on one moment, please, I will bring up RDC's calendar for, for October.
Okay. Thank you. The eleventh of October is Sovereign Tea Day. Just for your information, I know that Navajo Nation is usually off that day. And we'll see what day will work good. Also, um, Honorable Eugene So, which is LDA, Ms. Detman, is requesting to have an RDC in-person meeting at Chin Lee. So, some for us to consider at our next RDC meeting, we can put that on the agenda. And we will have Honorable So and his LDA to provide us the location of the meeting when we go out there. So, Shana, I, uh, Mr. Tahi? Anything? I believe the Navajo Nation Council session, thank you, Ms. Curly, is from the eighteenth through the twenty-second, correct, Ms. Begay?
Mr. Chair, members of do my um planner. RDC still has available October fourth and fifth and also the twelfth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth are the open dates that I see on my planner. Yes, you are right, the Navajo Nation Council has a fall session uh, on September eighteenth, May, October eighteenth through the twenty-second, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Honorable Chair, this is Rodney. Um, Sammy is correct, those are the dates that um are available from what she has read.
Thank you. I would suggest that we do it as soon as possible. Since the thirtieth was that Thursday, the following Monday should work on the fourth. So, the fourth is open?
That is correct, the fourth is open.
Okay, thank you. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second, the fourth or the fifth, but I would think the fourth. Motion?
Motion, Stewart, for October fourth, nine o'clock.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, second by.
Freeland?
Honorable Freeland, any comments or questions? I hear none. It will be October fourth at nine AM, Monday. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote, sir?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Yeah, I'll get Kialan, which green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes, Ms. Begay.
Uh, for this leadership meeting, I would, I'd like to recommend that um Department of Agricultural Grazing Official Unit be invited to this meeting because the grazing official has um important role in, in these lease processing at the local level. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you for that recommendation, Mr. Tahi. If you would include the Department of Agriculture's grazing officials to listen in and have Mr. Leo Watchman uh be invited to meeting as well. There, so that will be included. Thank you, Ms. Begay. None, uh, we're back to reports. We're on number five now. A, report by Southern Solutions Environmental relating to their decontamination activities under their Navajo Nation contract during COVID-nineteen pandemic. Mr. Ike Hawkerson, Hawkersmith, apologize, sorry for that, CEO. Um, sir, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, when you do your presentation, uh, Mr. Hawkersmith, I would like for you to refrain from requesting any funds from ARPA or related to anything as such. I would like for you to know that, sir.
Understood.
Thank you. You may proceed with your presentation. Is there another person that you have that will do the presentation with you, sir?
There's a couple of staff members uh that I will be introducing, um, and but we'll slide through it um when you're ready.
Um, I need to know at this time, sir, identify your, your agents.
Okay, um, my Director of Tribal Operations, Gabriel Freeland. Um, uh, there's also uh my Client Service Manager, Sherilyn Benali. Um, there's my Office Manager, um, as well, LaRose Spencer. And uh, my Office Assistant, uh, Terilyn Sharkey. And those are the individuals that will also be on the car, uh, on the call. Thank you.
Thank you. You have twenty minutes from now. Thank you. You may proceed.
Yate, and good morning, RDC uh Committee. Uh, my name is Scott Hawkersmith, owner and CEO of Southern Solutions Environmental. Um, this is an update on services that were executed um under our previous contract with Navajo Nation. Um, and I give you guys an idea of what was achieved. Um, with that, um, I'll be introducing my Tribal Operations Director, Gabriel Freeland.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Um, let me go ahead and share our screen. Um, I'm pulling up the PowerPoint presentation right now. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, are you able to see the screen?
Honorable members of RDC? Go ahead, Ms. Begay. Ms. Begay?
Sir, yes, I can see the PowerPoint.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Freeland.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Chair, we were have, we had a couple of technical difficulties. But with that, Mr. Chair, um, my name is Gabriel Freeland, initially, boy cleaning, which is change. I am the Tribal, um, Tribal, um, Operations Director for SSE and wanted to give you guys an update on the contract that was executed in twenty twenty. Um, Southern Solution is a, specializes in bio services, including three dimen- three D deconning services and two-dimensional um sanitation. Um, and basically, our product is Decon Seven, that comes in three types of form. The, the foam, the fog and the spray. Um, and SSE was able to help the Navajo Nation through its pandemic in providing um clean and sterile environments for, from COVID-nineteen. Um, the reason um we were able to provide some deconning services was because of the Navajo Nation's public health emergency due to the COVID-nineteen and the federal government's um assistance to tribal states and local governments in regards to the CARES Act. Um, with that, Mr. Chair, I am going to turn the floor over to um Lynn Benali.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, Sher- Sherlyn Benali, initially, so told the question, touching me, about she, told something about she changed, and I'm, I'm, I'm. I am the Client Services Manager for SSE. And I'll be going over the action, uh, after-action field analysis. So, this is our twenty twenty SSE contract with the Navajo Nation. The certificate number, date executed was October twenty-second, twenty twenty. Date expired, December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and the amount of four million, two thousand, um, two hundred and forty thousand in Navajo taxes. SSE and Navajo Nation Facility Maintenance Department developed a strategy to set the goals and objectives to keep the Navajo Nation employees safe when the pandemic hit. And throughout, throughout the whole pandemic, we provided decontamination, emergency spray in case a building did get compromised with COVID, we were there to spray. We serviced over four hundred offices on the Navajo Nation and we ensured the same-day service. So that way, you know, we protected the Navajo Nation and the employees there to ensure their safety. Our decontamination coverage is six point two million square feet of space, equivalent to a hundred and forty-three acres. Again, we did um, uh, estimate was roughly forty-nine million cubic feet of decontamination. Again, we did survey four hundred Navajo Nation facilities. Um, emergency work or orders that were made were more than six hundred thousand. And this included the chapter houses and the senior centers because they were the main um source of getting water out, food, essential needs for the Navajo Nation. It's where our primary challenge is along the way. You know, as we know, Navajo Nation is a rural area. With the coverage of it, again, we did four hundred locations. Some of them, some of these facilities did not have any street names or addresses to them. The long distance, um, outdated and incomplete data, incomplete mobile network. But we were able to succeed on going, getting through these challenges and executing. on going, getting through these challenges and executing our contract. Our Navajo Nation facility summary, there are chapter houses and senior centers. We have, you know, we have 110 chapter houses, 82 senior centers. These were decontaminated again because they were housed as food distribution, water, and essential needs for the community members. And they were, the number of treatment was four per facilities. Some of these were not sprayed due to the closure of COVID-19. Some of them didn't know that we were contracted under the Navajo Nation, so they were unaware of our services. Some of them already had their in-house cleaning methods and some just refused decon. As you can see, the graph to the left, our senior centers that we served just was 64. Chapter house service was 87. Here is an oversight of five agencies on the Navajo Nation, senior centers that were sprayed, chapter house service, and what was in-service for both senior centers and chapter houses. I'm going to go ahead and get the floor over to Terilyn Sharkey.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Terilyn Sharkey. And I will be going over the SSE method. I think Solutions Environmental utilized a powerful contaminant called Decon 7 that was developed in Albuquerque, New Mexico by Sandia National Laboratories and funded by the U.S. Department of Energy. Decon 7, it infects, sanitizes, cleans, and deodorizes in a wide temperature range and has the capabilities of attacking nearly 100% of virus, bacteria, and fungi to prevent further spread. Decon 7 is EPA registered, which makes it a practical sanitizing agent for public and food production environments. EPA registration is the non-food equivalent to an FDA approval for solutions made and produced in the United States. It is odorless when used within the recommended timeframe, therefore used in multiple settings such as hospitals, military bases, hotels, grocery stores, and farms. Decon 7 is made up of hydrogen peroxide, laundry detergent, and inorganic salts. This allows the breakdown of surrounding mucus and saliva to nullify not only COVID-19 viruses and its variants, but also other illnesses like influenza and hanta virus. We had the procedural steps that our technicians will follow when fogging Decon 7 in public and office spaces. Starting off with an arrival, continuing on to a setup, following through with the decontamination and ending with a departure. SSE has a total of 10 teams for the Navajo Nation, 18 dedicated to routine decontamination, and 2 teams readily available for emergency decontamination. In an overview of how the chapters are broken down by the areas. SSE offers a live mapping system that allows tribal employees to log in and easily search when a building was decontaminated and who was signed off, who signed off on the completion. This database also shows the frequency a building was decontaminated. A critical response and solutions includes the COVID-19 portal from the NDOH website. And we have a response time within 4 to 24 hours for emergency services. Thank you. I will now hand it off to LaRose.
Good morning. My name is LaRose Spencer. I'll be going over our SSE initiatives. And so here, SSE is taking upon themselves to build a better workforce, therefore encouraging our employees to build their resumes, continue their education, and empower themselves to be a better person for their community. SSE is doing this by having multiple programs and opportunities like our employee advancement program, our skills assessment, aptitude testing, and our APA International credentialing. So within these programs, our employees are able to challenge themselves to go further with their career, also see where improvements can be made, and learn how to be and do better. Continuing with our initiatives, there's the state and federal program. So here, we'll be optimizing them to help us do a job that is provided to accomplish the goals and objectives of our clients. Also, Navajo first priority. Here, we hired 112 local Navajos, so those employees stayed within their communities. Materials and training. So we're providing the proper trainings needed to complete the job safely and efficiently, supplying our employees with the PPE needed. And then next, employee surveys. So with 112 employees, we sent out a company-wide email just to get feedback on where our employees stood. Here, we maintain a balance of nearly 50-50 male-to-me, female ratio. We have we have employees who held certificates, associates degrees, a good a good amount of our employees also had high school diplomas. On the left or the right side, you'll see that interested in continuing their education. We had 78.6% of our employees who wanted to continue their education, and this is something we'd be able to help them with. And I'll be turning it back over to Lynn.
I'll be going over the biosecurity services. Again, SSE wants to have the commitment of preventative decontamination, routine decontamination services, safety virus update, monthly briefing. With the new Delta variant out, we want to go ahead and keep our Navajo Nation employees safe, the community members, also the children, you know, they're going back to school, they're in school now, and we want to protect them from that Delta variant. We want to keep the hazard response within the 24 hours or less. Technicians will be there to decontaminate the spread from COVID-19 and will meet any additional needs. And I'll go ahead and, um, put it through Terilyn.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to start a, I'm trying to get the video.
Are you still there?
Can you guys hear us? Or hear the video?
Now, we, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can you hear the video?
Um, I, I don't.
No.
No, we don't hear the video.
Okay.
Okay, we're working through some technical stuff to make sure the video is heard, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Mr. Chair, can you hear that?
Yes, I do hear it.
My name is Nabai Betsui. I am from Wonder Rock, Arizona.
Hi, my name is Tanisha Aliabedoni. I'm from Nera Canyon, but I live in Kanta, Arizona.
Hello, my name is Kevin Greys, and I'm from Tetchy, Arizona.
My name is Brian Cly. I'm from Kanta, Arizona.
My name is Scott Hawkersmith. I'm the owner and CEO.
Working with SSE for about six months, and I was the technician for the Wonder Rock, C. Michaels, and 40 finance area.
I work at SSE. My, my position would be field technician.
And I worked for a company called Southern Solution Environmental. Title with them is Field Lead Technician.
My job title for SSE is a field technician. I'd like to take this time to thank all of the hardworking employees that have stepped up and assisted us during this time.
Communication was great, like, you know, when I worked with them, and also knowing a lot of other people in my community and around this area. I got along with getting all of it, you know, basically the decon services done.
It felt like I was the one, it was like my turn to, to take care of my family.
A lot of motivation for me comes from my kids. I want to show them that I'm a person that doesn't give up.
It feels good to me knowing that what this company is doing is not just for themselves, it's for people, it's for everybody, you know. It's, it's basically, the point is, it's to make this world a better place.
I want to thank you, and I want to thank your continued efforts as we carry into the next phase of this pandemic. Unfortunately, due to the Delta variant and other new variants of concern, it appears as though we need to continue our disinfection campaigns. We need to ensure that tribal facilities will continue to be disinfected and so that you and your community will remain safer.
Back. Okay, am I, let me, yeah, so that'll conclude our report. Thank you to all of my employees and thank you to the members of the RDC Committee for hearing our report. I'm very proud of everything that we've achieved, and I really appreciate the opportunity to share that with you all. So thank you again.
Thank you. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Motion, Stuart.
Thank you. Second?
Chairman Cal.
Honorable Begay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Southern Solutions Environmental?
Comments, none.
Okay, Honorable Stuart, go ahead.
Again, yeah, there's none. Chairman, there's, Vice Chair Walker, I should, I can, I don't staff, I don't, the code, um, SSE Solutions, although this presentation that you have presented to us today, thank you for that information as, as well, that has been provided to us last week, and the hard copies that were given to us as far as what safety measures you have taken for the chapters, the communities, the schools, and what areas you have worked in as well within the nation to make sure our employees are safe and the community members are as safe as can be, and also assisting where you can. The presentation is very beneficial to the RDC Committee and to the staff as well. So thank you for that presentation, sir, and your staff as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Honorable Stuart. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? None. Mr. Hawkersmith? Like to do a closing statement?
Again, thank you, the committee, for hearing out this report. It took a lot of work, and I'm very proud of what we've achieved again. And again, one more thank you to all of my employees, and that will conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments, questions? None. We'll go ahead and vote to accept the report. Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Honorable Begay? Honorable Vice Chair?
Thomas Walker votes green.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, and thank you, Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels? Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland? Honorable Stuart?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Honorable Freeland? Okay, thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland? Okay, we have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. B, update report on the one-stop-shop. Dr. Rudy Shabala? Ms. Valinda Shirley? Are you on the call?
Yeah, Chair, Valinda Shirley's here.
Okay. Ms. Brenda Holgate, are you on the call? Anybody from Division of Natural Resources?
Hello, Honorable Chair, this is Stephen from the General Land Development Department.
Uh, Steve Chishily?
Correct. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Dr. Shabala? We also have Mike Colonna on the call with us. Dr. Shabala? Crystar 6? Dr. Shabala, your number showed up on the screen, so you're probably having technical difficulties. Perhaps try to push Crystar 6?
Chairman, Freeland's on, I lost service.
Okay. Honorable Freeland, we voted on the last report, so we're on to the next report here. Dr. Shabala? Ms. Valinda Shirley?
Yes, sir.
I'll let you go ahead and get started while Dr. Shabala gets on again.
Oh, yeah. I can add, Chair, though, Quakey, Shina, Ani, Noshini, Anotso, Resource Development Committee. My colleagues on the executive and the legislative staff, yeah, good afternoon to all of you. So we did share a, a slide, some slides with you last week when we were preparing to give this report. So we'll be going through those slides that were provided, and I will have Mr. Chishily share his screen to go through those slides. And I'm basically just providing some introduction and want to provide this report as, I'm sure you all are familiar with the, with the law that was signed on August 2nd of 2021, CJY 4121. This was an action relating to the Budget, Finance, and Navajo Attic Committees and the Navajo Nation, and this law was to establish the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund and the expenditure authorization process therein. So in this law that was, that was signed and is, has put into motion a lot of how the Navajo Nation will address the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Funds. And within this law, in section 16, or excuse me, section 13, there was a directive to the Division of Natural Resources and the General Land Development Department. And the directive was basically to present a proposed plan of operation for the one-stop-shop. And this one-stop-shop would facilitate review and approve rights-of-way temporary construction permits, mission site permits, leases, et cetera. And we were to present this proposed plan of operation to the Resources Development Committee within 45 days after the effective date of this legislation. So Shina, that's, that is the intent, and that is what we are doing today. So, with that, I do want to say that there have been a lot of participation from different departments. From us here within Navho EPA, we have been also working with the Navho Nation General Land Development Department, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Land Department, the Heritage and Historic Preservation Department, the Minerals Department, and the Department of Forestry. So, we certainly want to thank those departments that have been participating and have helped to draft this plan of operation. So, with that, I do want to hand the floor, or give the floor, to my colleague, Stephen Chischili. Chair, may I have Mr. Chischili go through these slides with you, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chischili, go ahead. Proceed.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, everybody on the call, honorable RDC members. Thank you, Valinda, for that. As stated by Ms. Valinda Shirley, this is a compilation of the authorities as well as timeframes and project initiation, based flow charts, based on the regulatory departments of the Navho Nation, how we can address the efficiency issue and the transparency issue in terms of getting FRF projects through quicker. I'm not sure if everybody has accessed the PowerPoint presentation provided to Mr. Tahie last Wednesday, but it basically just starts off with the addressing of the resolution of CJY-41-21, following up with Directive Number B, or Letter B, stating that today is going to be the presentation of the proposed plan of operation for the One Stop Shop. If you scroll down or open up Slide 5, it'll show basic flow of how the One Stop Shop will process different projects. On the left side of the screen progressing to the right, you will see that the project manager, which is in the parentheses, will provide the scope, the schedule, and the budget of the project being proposed. Next, it'll be submitted to the...
Mr. Chischili?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chischili? Could you turn up your vol, on your phone, please?
Um, okay. Let me see. Is that better, Chair?
Uh, yes, it's better. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, back to the flow charts. So, the project will be given a scope, schedule, and budget by the project manager. It'll then progress on to getting assigned an FRF project number, very similar to the EOR numbers that are assigned for the 164 projects. Next, the type of action will be determined, and from there, the process will be initiated for whichever project needs to take place, whether that be a right-of-way, TAA, service line agreement, home site lease, a land withdrawal for a future business site lease, or an administrative function where no new land action will take place. The next slide is a breakdown of the existing preliminary work and process of a right-of-way. So, this is what entities or applicants such as Continental Divide, APS, Sikora Electric would follow. Most of it is pretty familiar. I'll go down from the top, though, to list out the necessary documents. The first one would be for, in the preliminary work, would be for a CRCF to be attained. That would come from HPD, biological equivalent, which would come from Fish and Wildlife Departments, the legal survey, which would lead to an eventual KMZ file. This file would allow us to view the corridor of the proposed right-of-way in Google Earth or any other GIS-type software. Next would be obtaining a chapter resolution of support from all the affected chapters, as well as obtaining the grazing permittee consents, as well as the field clearance checklist. And because this is a federal undertaking, it'll also require an environmental assessment and the right-of-way application for BIA. After that, it'll be compiled into a letter of application, or with the letter of application, and the project packet will then be submitted to the General Land Development Department. General Land Development Department will then send over a request for an assessment or consideration from the Minerals Department under OWEINA, and then the environmental compliance determination will need to be reviewed for in-house by the General Land Development Departments. It'll then proceed at that juncture, it'll be uploaded into the Electronic 164 process, also known as PRISM, also known as the Navho Nation system. It'll be sent to everybody within Tier 1 in parallel. Everybody listed in this Tier 1 will be notified immediately from Fish and Wildlife, HPD, Navho Nation EPA, Navho Nation Minerals, and Department of Water Resources. Once everybody there has deemed it legally sufficient electronically, it moves on to Tier 2. There is more of the supervisory aspect of the, these people are called the approvers. So, Fish and Wildlife, HPD, Navho Nation EPA, Minerals, Division of Natural Resources, and Navho Land Departments. Once the concurrence is added to the project electronically, electronically signed, any comments needed are archived, any memos needed to be attached are attached. Project is then printed and taken to Navho Nation Department of Justice to be reviewed once more for legal sufficiency. There, the time window can vary based on how long it'll take. Then, once it is deemed legally sufficient, it'll proceed on to Navho, I'm sorry, OPVP to be reviewed once more for legal sufficiency. All, keep in mind, DOJ OPVP is all analog, it's not electronic. After it is deemed legally sufficient through OPVP, it is then routed to OLC as well to be reviewed for the third time for legal sufficiency. Physically, it's physically routed. After that, after it is deemed sufficient, it is then drafted for legislation, obviously, and goes before RDC. After it is approved, and there's a resolution that has been drafted and approved and signed, we get a copy, and we route the letter of consents from the landowner who BIA identifies as the president. Once the consent is signed, it is then sent to BIA once more to be approved for the second approval. If you look at the bottom of the screen, you can see that they're, depending on where the project will be located, sometimes entails whether or not tree removal permits or further Navho Nation EPA appropriate permits are needed. Onto the next slide, you will see what the proposed process will be as it will be under the One Stop Shop. So, these are all the changes that are going to be proposed in verbiage for the One Stop Shop's plan of operation. All the pre-development phases will still happen, it'll still need a BRCF, CRCF, survey, chapter resolution, but once that happens, the assessment will be done by Minerals, environmental compliance determination will happen again. But in the proposed version of the 164 approval process, there will only be one tier, there will only be one representative from each department to concur the documents, that way there's no redundancy added. Once it is done electronically, keep in mind that this is all electronically processed through Navho Nation system, it is then approved by everybody in the review here, it is then electronically sent to Navho Nation DOJ, deemed sufficient, and ideally would be sent after that to a delegated approval within the Division of Natural Resources, much like a land withdrawal or a home site lease. After that, it would be packaged by the General Land Development Department and sent over to BIA for it to be reviewed, thus omitting OPVP, OLC, RDC. The next slide is a breakdown of what a TAA entails and the process that takes place. A TAA is only applicable for 100% wholly-owned Navho Nation entities, NTUA, NECA, INDOT, those entities. Same basic requirements, basically essentially the same as a land withdrawal designation, BRCF, legal survey, field clearance that would help attain the grazing permittee consents, and a supporting chapter resolution. That is then sent to the General Land Development Department, where it is then reviewed for environmental compliance determination, and then it is uploaded into Electronic 164 to be reviewed in Tier 1, Tier 2, DOJ, concurred by the Navho Land Department, sent to OPVP for the consent of the nation, and then eventually sent to BIA for recordation. The proposed process, to shorten that, that would be outlined in the proposed plan of operations, would be after the normal application-based documents are compiled, it would be sent to Navho General Land Development Department, given environmental compliance determination, only seen and concurred by one tier of reviewers, sent to Navho Nation DOJ, and be finalized with the Navajo Land Department Director, as delegated in the TAA resolution, legislation, then sent to BIA for recordation. Next slide would be the service line agreement. So, these are the smaller utility lines branching off of the major rights-of-way. These usually serve home sites or commercial setups. As you can see, it's in green. For the most part, all that is needed is a CRCF, a BRCF, a legal survey, a KMZ, so we know where the project would be located, and verifying the land conveyance information. That mostly means, do they have a business site lease? Do they have a land withdrawal designation? Do they have a home site lease? If everything says yes, it is then sent over to the General Land Development Department. If it is a commercial line, say it's serving churches' chicken, it'll then be assessed for consideration by Minerals. If not, it is just sent over to the environmental reviewer to be given environmental compliance determination. Since that is given to the project for the service line agreement, it is sent to the Navajo Land Director to approve it. And these are added into the presentation as comparable to other processes that are happening currently through a delegation to the Navajo Land Director. Slide 14 is the home site lease process, very abbreviated, but it basically has the same basic skeleton. BRCF, legal survey, field clearance checklist that would help attain the grazing permittee consents. Once that is compiled, it is then sent currently to the home site leasing offices for each agency. After that is done, it is sent for environmental compliance determination done by GLAD, General Land Development Department. Once that is issued, it is sent to the Navho Land Director for approval, and then finally it'll be sent to BIA for recordation. The next slide is land withdrawal for business site leases. So, before a business site lease could be issued by DED, it needs to have a land withdrawal for the direct purpose that is needed, as outlined in the land withdrawal designation regulations. And for a land withdrawal, all that is needed is a CRCF, BRCF, legal survey, supporting chapter resolution with the added verbiage, legal verbiage from the regulations, as well as the grazing permittee consent. One last thing that's not on here is the cover letter of application as well. Once that is compiled and sent to the General Land Development Department, it is then reviewed for environmental compliance, and if that is determined, an approval letter is drafted and submitted to the Navajo Land Director as the Navho Land Director is delegated to approve land withdrawal designations. After that happens, it is then sent to DED for them to pursue a business site lease through their 164 review process. Sometimes this land withdrawal designation process entails obtaining tree removal permits from forestry or further consultation with Navho Nation EPA. The next slide covers an existing right-of-way that is administrative only for the most part, and doesn't really entail, or does not entail no new land action. This would be the case for as-built rights-of-way or rights-of-way attained by the nation or any other entities, such as NTUA attaining the Rocky Mountain Power rights-of-way in Utah, or as-built rights-of-way done by Continental Divide. In order to get them into compliance, for the most parts, the base documents needed would be CRCF, BRCF, KMZ, chapter resolution, grazing permittee consents, as well as the environmental documents that were first compiled when the original project went through, if post 1969, after the National Environmental Protection Act was instilled. The next slide would show that environmental compliance determination would be issued as required through the general leasing regulations. Then, it'll be submitted through the 164. That's an error right there on the slide in terms of getting approved by the Navajo Land Director, but as an existing process. But proposed action would be to, after the Navajo Land Director would be delegated, ideally that person would be able to approve the right-of-way. The last slide covers the next steps needed for this regulatory group to push forward the plan of operations. That would include a work session with all the members of RDC to allow more elaborate breakdown and synopsis of the plan of operations, any questions that needed more detail, as well as seeking guidance from Navajo Department of Justice on what parts of the right-of-way process that the president is able to delegate, as well as another follow-up meeting with BIA to ensure that this, that delegation from Office of the President, Vice President, to another individual within the Division of Natural Resources consenting as the landowner is applicable for them, and they would accept those rights-of-way. That would be imperative for all the non-Navajo, Navho Nation entities that aren't applicable for the TAAs. Next would be the finalization of the plan of operations, obviously find a sponsor for it, and submit it for the five-day comment period, and ideally get it approved by RDC. I do have Mr. Halona on the line, I believe, if he has any other comments to make, and if not, then I'm open to questions. Thank you, Chair. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chischili. Your 20 minutes is up. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Honorable Begay? Thank you. None, sir? Do you have any questions? We have about five minutes left, and then we have another scheduled meeting at 1:00. Are there any questions? Comments? Honorable Gay? At the floor.
Chairman, I think this will be an ongoing process. It entails a lot on this particular report. Because we have another meeting that's scheduled, and I'm not sure if we have gave the opportunity for our staff to even take a break, to have lunch or anything like that. So, those are things I think we need to put in consideration as well. I believe that this needs to be presented to the full, maybe at the Navoikiya Committee, on how we're putting this One Stop Shop together. I'd like to hear directly from the Land Department, Division of Natural Resources, and other departments of how we need to move forward on this particular development. I'm not sure if the committee is willing to say that we could, let's schedule an all-day meeting, even if possible, on a weekend if possible, to continue to address this particular issue, and then if it's just a report, it's just a report to me. I'd like to put some action in these particular processes as well. My question would be is that, I mean, why can't the Navo Nation have this simple process? Um, uh, my question would be is that, I mean, why can't the Navo Nation have this simple process? Not just only for the upper funding, it, uh, it doesn't make sense for me to develop something, then, uh, once that funding is gone, then you go back to the old process, and still, majority of our Navo people will continue to wait for their service to get something done. That's one thing that I like to say is that, hey, I mean, let's just, let the Navo Nation, uh, fully, um, uh, put this, uh, policy or, uh, proposal in place, and then let's get to work on it, uh, to get things done. So, I don't know what the, uh, other committee feels about, uh, scheduling a meeting on this particular process, Chair, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Gay. I believe it would be an excellent idea to recommend a work session all day. Perhaps we can sit down and, uh, we have done with, uh, D C D at Twin Arrows, and go through the presentation page by page, and we will have everybody from General Land Development Department, Fish, um, EPA, D N R, Land Department, and others that will be involved in this process. Or, I see, and the President's office. And also we have, uh, there's, uh, Mr. Chuck Howe on the line as a consultant as well. And if anybo- any one of our colleagues, they are more than welcome to attend as well. So, what we could do is next Wednesday, Mr. Tahie, if you would, uh, place that on the agenda to have a, an approval or a scheduled work session, it'll be a work session. Perhaps the best location with the big area would be Twin Arrows Navo Casino Resort, and we'll decide what day we can do that, and really get this done, because we're trying to make preparations for the American Rescue Act funding that we have, and we'll start introducing legislations for many projects. And this would expedite a lot of the process going through the one-stop shop. We have been discussing this now for about almost two years now, so it's time that we, uh, put it into law. And the last page, next steps again, is to finalize, we'll have a work session, we'll finalize the plan of operation, and then a sponsor, and then introduce this into, uh, before our colleagues, so. Any other comments or questions? None? We'll go ahead and put it to a vote, but, um, with, with that, uh, Mr. Tahie, if you would add that to next Wednesday's agenda, thank you. Uh, no further comments or questions, none, I will go ahead and accept the report. Thank you, Ms. Shirley, and Mr. Chishily, as well as Mr. Chuck Howe for being on the line, as well as Mr. Halona. Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Gay?
Chairman, I vote Green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart? Honorable Freeland? We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries, we'll accept the report on the one-stop shop. Thank you very much.
Chairman Green? Chairman Green, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Okay, Honorable Freeland, the vote changes to four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. None, uh? We have two minutes before our next meeting, and that's not enough time for Intech to provide a report, so I'd like to ask that we defer Intech's report to next Wednesday, they will be first on the report. And at this time, I would like to ask for a motion and a second to adjourn so we can start our other meeting. You have one minute to eat your lunch. Motion?
Motion, Freeland, Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, second by?
Stewart? Yep.
Honorable Stewart? Welcome back. None, uh, any comments or questions? None, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Gay?
Yeah, I vote Green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. It's one o'clock P M, we are officially adjourned, and we'll get on to our next meeting as soon as we hang up here. So, if you could at least grab something and call back in, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Hakona?